...meeting. We'll have the roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Watts.
Here.
Councilwoman Knappel.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott. Councilman Evil.
Here.
Councilman Petty.
Here.
Councilman Reese.
Here.
City Attorney Moore.
Here.
Okay, we, has everyone had a chance to read the minutes from the August 1st public hearing and council minutes? If so, do I hear that we accept?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Watts, second by Mr. Evil. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Consideration of bills over 2,000?
I scanned an attachment to your emails earlier, so if you guys have any questions over the bills, I'll be happy to answer them.
Do we approve the public hearing minutes as well on that, or that was just motion for the council meeting minutes?
Yes, for both.
For both, okay.
I make a motion for the bills.
Second.
Okay, motion is seconded to approve the bills. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. We have citizens' concerns. Trash pickup Kelly Butler? Is Kelly here?
He's, he's, I'll make it.
Okay. Tattoo shop zoning, Ms. Kane?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Karen Kane, I'm the owner and operator of Tattoo and Tattoo. Some of you I've met, a couple of you guys were in planning and zoning meetings. And the meeting that we had a year and a half ago to issue a zoning variance for my establishment to be where it is. So I was a little taken aback when I found out that apparently I'm not zoned. That confuses me a lot, because we had several, we have public hearings, we had meetings, six weeks worth to get it approved. So I'm a little concerned. So I obtained a copy of the ordinance, and the way the ordinance is written now that you guys are seeking to approve, I just want to, one, check my clarification before I address any concerns that I have, and make myself available for questioning regarding the way my business is operated if you have a concern. And if the way I understand it's written is actually the way it's written, we'll address that in a moment. Okay? So the way I understand that it's written, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that I am not zoned currently. And if I were to, if a tattoo shop were to be zoned in that area, in order to obtain zoning, to obtain zoning, it would be a special appeal that I would have to come before the council and disclose, be inspected basically, disclose how I dispose of medical waste, this, that, and the other. And then you'd decide whether or not I could be there. So is that my understanding?
I think maybe Dr. Duke can speak to that, because he's on the.
No, the, the, the last time that you thought you had it, which, which, I'm sorry, it's not that way, it just didn't pass.
Okay, we're past that.
Yeah, anyway. So in this particular time, going before the Board of Zoning Appeals is a special use permission, which doesn't mean that it will be examined for anything other than setbacks, things that are normally, we normally do on the planning commission. That's the only thing, that's the only difference in between the two.
Okay.
We don't, we do not look at, we don't look at anything the state does, because that's control of the state. We don't inspect medically, your medical disposal stuff, or whatever, we don't inspect that.
Okay. So what this, the way this reads, and again, I may be getting into semantics, but if we're gonna do things legally and have a right, let's get the verbiage right, if that's the case. And what this says is, as soon as I can find it, hang on, should have highlighted it. Tattoo and body piercing establishments, as herein defined, shall only be permitted on appeal, and shall comply with all requirements and regulization, regulations found in the code, which we do. Properly prepared site plans, blah, blah, blah. Pursuant to that. Well, shoot, I had a minute ago. I apologize. So you guys are not looking then to have me come before, because the notes that I got from your last planning meeting state, and this is where I may got up in arms about it. It says, "Correct this ordinance that was never passed," which I understand, somebody forgot to dot their i's and cross their t's, I get that. And please know I'm here in a spirit of cooperation to be legal. That's my biggest concern, I want my business legal. But it also says that the new ordinance makes it where they can still be there, but they must come before Board of Zoning and have a public hearing and be approved. Okay, well, you know, if you have concerns about medical waste, et cetera, we are heavily, heavily regulated by the state. And I brought you guys some copies of our regulations. I brought you all of my inspection records. I brought you all of my autoclave testing, because we have to test our auto, our medical autoclaves to make sure they're killing scores, I keep records of that. We are more heavily regulated than a doctor's office. All the way down to special things I do, like get a locking dumpster, to be a good citizen. Because I don't, I'm not required to, but if I'm situated near a restaurant and we have homeless people going through the restaurant trash, I don't want them going through my trash, there might be a paper towel in there that has a little blood on it. We're not required by law to dispose of bloody paper towels and bloody gauze in any special way. So I take the extra step to dispose of them in a medical way. Because I want to be preemptive in that, I want to ensure that. So the way this reads, it really blocks any other tattoo shop from coming in. You would think that I would just be thrilled with that. But if you look at it on a broader perspective, it's prejudicial. Competition's good, and I would prefer if there is any other tattoo shop in here that they're as good or better than me, because competition's good. But restricting a particular industry based on the fact that we may dispose of some medical waste, or there's some things that we need to do a special way, then we need to include in that any other business that is restricted that way as well. I.e., tanning salons, hair salons, restaurants, deli's at grocery stores. I don't know if you guys have ever watched, when your meat is sliced, what happens with the women that wear gloves. There is a gross cross-contamination issue, because they're not trained. So those establishments as well, if you're gonna restrict zoning based on that, singling out tattoo parlor is prejudicial. And to regulate it upon yourself is a duplication of services, if that's what you're intending to do.
I'm not sure we are, could we hear from Dr. Duke?
Okay, because we're so heavily regulated, your time and energy can be spent elsewhere.
If Dr. Duke could, could address your thoughts.
First of all, we're not in the business, we have no authority to regulate what you do, or if you're, if the medical end of that, if the medical waste net. That often comes from the state, that has nothing to do with us whatsoever. If you look in the general classification of what goes in C2, there are certain things that will fit that general classification, certain things that won't. Your tattoo parlors and piercings don't fit that, like, don't fit generally the way it's supposed to. Now this, you're saying we're restricting, we're not restricting anybody. This is just a process that, it would be almost the same process that's coming forward, like you did the last time. Basically, you came for the planning commission and that sort of thing.
And in that meeting, they included tattoo and body piercing establishments in C2, so that the code read that way. So that if someone wanted to open one, they didn't have to ask for a special variance.
Right. Asking for a special variance has nothing to do, because it's a tattoo parlor, other than the fact that it just does not fit in C2. Anything that doesn't fit in a general C2, okay, let's say for instance, if somebody came in and just wanted to do, oh, I don't know, something, it would be totally unusual.
Name one that would not be. The used car lot where all Sonic is, we had to, that doesn't fit into C2, it's supposed to be in C1, C3, something like that. But we had to make a special variance for, for the car lot to go in that. So it, I don't think that we're trying to say like, no tattoo parlors or anything, we're just saying like.
So are you saying it needs to be, to have a tattoo parlor, it needs to be C1?
I don't know what it's supposed to be, but I'm just saying like, we're just.
It just doesn't fit in any, it doesn't fit in any category. Now, if she were in medical, she, medical, it would have fit perfectly, no trouble. We don't need medical.
That's basically what it is.
Yeah. Right, right.
I fall, I fall under the purview of a medical establishment.
Absolutely, you do.
I think he's saying in medical zoning, there's just medical zoning.
If you were in medical, this wouldn't, I mean, if you were, if your establishment was in medical, you could just do it right away, and you wouldn't have to go through this.
But medical zoning, I think you're saying.
The, I'm talking about medical zoning.
Right, the medical's gonna be up by the hospital.
Where I'm at right now is not zoned for medical.
Correct.
And I took over a medical office.
Right.
Because.
Yeah.
We started cleaning up stuff, right when you came along, but.
You wouldn't believe what I found in there.
But anyway, so.
What does it take to establish what zoning a tattoo, to find a spot to put tattoo parlors in? We gotta have a spot somewhere.
Okay, and here's the bigger question, I'm already there, now what?
We're not kicking you out.
But nobody's kicking you out.
I mean, we're not, this doesn't change, this doesn't change any.
I like clarification.
Like, this does not change anything at all for you.
Forgive me if I can't take you saying, oh, you're not getting kicked out on a phone call, to heart. I need to come here and hear it from you guys, that I'm okay to be where I am.
You are, right.
Probably needed in some form of writing. And, and, you know, either it was a grandfathering clause or something, so that I don't have to go through a bunch of zoning meetings.
Or at least, at least temporary until we can find a spot, you know, the verbiage in the zoning.
Karen, correct me if I'm saying this wrong, but I think.
We're gonna fix the zoning, so she can.
And I'm, I'm just concerned why it's so special for a tattoo parlor.
And I think, is that what you're basically saying?
Our industry as a whole is highly, heavily regulated, it's not, we have done so much to get rid of the stigma and the shadow over our industry. This is a professional, tax-paying business.
But if I'm hearing correctly, they're not asking you not to be there, that's not what, this is all about.
Okay, but if I don't have the zoning for it?
We're saying basically.
You're grandfathered in, you're already there.
If I'm correct on this, if, let's say, ABC Tattoo comes in tomorrow, and ABC Tattoo wants to set up in C2 zoning, they're just gonna, they're gonna be able to go set up right away, without any kind of special.
No, they won't.
No, they still have to go through a appeal process.
They'll have to.
No establishment will, any establishment has to go through, you know, the bill or.
But say, let's say, Evil's Tavern 2 comes around, and they want to go through, they gotta go through a special zoning for it.
No.
No, the zones will say, like, what you can, or they may as well say what you can have in them, right?
The zones have what you can have there listed.
Gotcha.
But if it's not listed in there, then you have to go to the zoning board.
Okay, and that's, I think that's what.
So the tattoo parlor is not listed in any of the zonings.
The intent of all the previous meetings I went to, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, because I acknowledge that the t's weren't crossed and the i's weren't dotted. But the intention in that meeting and the approval of that meeting was to have tattoo and body piercing establishments listed in the zone.
Instead of just individual variance, it was a broad variance, is what you thought it was happening.
It was, okay, so now we have this type of business, this type of business, and this type of business listed there, but we're gonna list this business here too. That was the whole purpose of that meeting.
And that's what this ordinance is going to do, it's gonna list it in there.
That is what it reads.
Okay, so once that one is.
It reads that I still have to come before the Board of Zoning and get approved.
You won't have to do anything.
Yeah, once, well, and for future reference, so once, once this, once this happens and it goes through, were its broad spectrum, it is then listed in this, or do we still have to get individual variances in the future?
Well, in this case, can we not make a motion to allow her to remain there until this situation is resolved, to where we thought it was?
We don't have to, we don't have to, she's allowed there.
So we're saying you're allowed there, all right.
No, my question, my question is the way this reads, it says that C2 is not going to be, tattoo and body piercing is not going to be listed in C2, so if another shop wanted to come in, they're gonna have to come to Board of Zoning and get approved. So maybe I need some clarification.
It will be listed.
I'm not trying to argue.
There's certain things listed that are, that are, that fall within the limits of the general thing that, that the code says fits in there.
And will tattoo and body piercing be listed in that?
It will be, it will be listed, and it'll be listed in C2, tattoos, well, tattoo parlors and piercings will be, after the Board, after they go through the Board of Zoning Appeals, it will be, we'll do that.
Okay.
Nobody, the only thing that the Board of Zoning Appeals is going to mess you up with would be if your setbacks were wrong, or if you, if you were doing something.
Okay, this is not about my business personally.
No.
This is about my industry. The whole purpose of me coming to these meetings before was, one, to open my own business, but also to have zoning for this industry. So now we have no zoning for this industry, whether I'm grandfathered in or not isn't the issue.
We're going to.
But this will have it, so. And it's doing, it's making you just do all, like, anybody that comes in, it's all the same stuff that you did a couple of years ago.
So they have to come ask permission to have a tattoo shop?
Right, just like if somebody wanted to open up another.
If somebody wanted to come and open up a, a.
Another used car lot, right.
Use car lot, they have to do the same thing, because it doesn't fit in the general scheme of what goes in C2.
So if I.
How should we get that in C2?
I think with, well, I think, I think, see, I think it was kind of this. So what I think, I think the step to solve this is what, what you would want to do is, is talk to people in the planning commission and say, we want to add this as part of C2 to where there's not special variances, but it's a broad spectrum for C2.
Right, and they still have to come to land use and get their approvals for setbacks and all that kind of stuff, but it's not about being a tattoo parlor.
As it stands now, there's any issues with that, but, yeah.
So I think. Where am I building?
No, this is not about you, Karen.
Okay.
This is not about you.
Well, you know, please understand, I'm a business owner, and I am here because I have interests.
Yeah, and we want you here.
You know, I would be not doing my diligence if I wasn't here. And just sit down there at the bottom of the hill willy-nilly and not discover what's going on here, that would be irresponsible of me.
Yeah, we appreciate you being here.
You know, um.
Trust me, we want you here, we, I mean, I ain't saying it with your tax base, I mean, you know.
You're not lying.
You know what I mean, I mean, you're a business, and a legitimate business, and you do a great job.
But what I'm saying, my question in this, is it's not including tattoo shops in that zone. Right now, in that zone, you have businesses that are allowed there.
So I think what.
Just like you have businesses on Main Street that are allowed there.
To, to change, to change that, I think it's, where you gotta start is with the planning commission, am I right, Roger?
Right.
So you want to start with the planning.
Well, they did that once.
And.
And they approved it, they sent it to the council.
This next Wednesday, we got, we got one at 5:30.
5:30.
5:30, yeah, we got one at 5:30 this Wednesday, coming up. And so it, we, it's something that we can definitely look at, I think, and there can be a broad spectrum, so it doesn't necessarily target your industry, we can look at possibly doing that.
The problem would be, is we would have to change the whole C2 code, if we did that.
Yeah.
This, this makes it much easier to do it this way, this, I'm just trying to get, so these people can come in and do.
Which I think would be, just to say.
And it is in my best interest that it's as difficult as possible for a tattoo shop to come in, but.
Could I inject, I think what I'm hearing is if a new tattoo parlor came in, M1 would be the logical place for them to be, for the, for the, I'm sorry, the hospital.
Yeah, I think you would fit in M1, because it comes under the general classification, what goes in M1.
Right, so.
But, but, you know, I'm sure they don't, may not want to put it, they may not can find a place to put it up there, so C2, it's fine, but.
No, they can be over on the other side of town, it's all right.
But I think it'd be a conversation.
I think it'd be a conversation worth picking Dr. Duke's brain on it, because he, he could probably explain it, it's just, it's so much detail to go over in a short amount of time, but, you know, you really want to spread the papers out, again, processes, doctors, everything like that.
And, you know, please understand that as a business owner, I have a vested interest.
Sure.
One, and two, industry-wide, I have an interest, because our industry has been scrutinized heavily and prejudiced against heavily over the years, and we're doing all we can to change it. You know, my mentor was part of writing the state regulations.
I would think, and again, I don't know first about this, but I would think there probably are state regulations about.
Oh, I brought you a copy.
About, maybe because you need to be in a hospital, or because of the blood products involved.
Okay, in order to open a tattoo parlor, prior to signing a lease, you have to submit a floor plan to the health department. They have, they tell you where you can put things within your building, and how you need to be set up, and you have to comply with that. Okay? And then they come back every three months and inspect. And in that inspection, it's not like a restaurant, where they go, okay, that's not good, we'll be back in 10 days. They don't do that, they fine you, first shot out the gate, and anything less than 100% is unacceptable.
Let me make you this promise then, because any business has to come through us, so if a new tattoo parlor comes in tomorrow, wanting to set up shop, we'll go through the right procedures and probably let them know, it would be easiest if you put it in this particular zone, because that's what it's zoned for.
Well, I mean, it matters not to me.
But that, I'm just saying, we will be careful, because they come in.
I think we're getting things confused, that the part, the, the, the state part, the thing that the state investigates you with, or examines you, I understand that completely, because I understand those, but that is not, that, we don't do that. The Board of Zoning Appeal has nothing to do with that whatsoever.
Well, they put me through a pretty rigorous test.
Well, they tripped me, because that doesn't come, that doesn't come under our power, we have nothing to do with that. As far as the planning commission is concerned, that and the Board of Zoning Appeals has nothing to do with the medical end of this. All, all those things that you get inspected for, and all those things that you have to do, that's between you and the state, that has nothing to do with us. That is not what the purpose of this is.
In the spirit of cooperation, you know, I did bring some documents that I can leave for you guys. These are, this is a copy of the tattoo and body piercing regulations, there's two separate ones, one for body piercing, these are the state regulations, and one for tattooing, these are state regulations. And we have to be compliant with these. Every artist has to take a bloodborne pathogens course that's offered by the state, they can't take an online one, or even one by the Red Cross, it's offered by the state. And we have to be, we have to get a little certificate that says that we did that, and hang it on our wall. And we have to be licensed, and the establishment has to be licensed. So I brought you copies of my health scores, if you want to see them, because I want you to be comfortable. You know, obviously there's a concern, or it wouldn't even have been brought up, you know?
I feel, I feel very comfortable with you here, I, I, do we, I mean, I think the whole.
You know, just to give an example, this is a questionnaire that I have to fill out to submit my floor plan. And it asks all the things on it, it asks, who's gonna be working there, how long they've been doing this, what's their license numbers, how do you get rid of your stuff, how do you test your stuff, how do you, you know, all of that.
Karen, none of this, none of this pertains to us.
Yes, we have an addition to that.
I know it doesn't, I'm, I'm so happy that you did it, but that has nothing to do with the Board of Zoning Appeals, it, you know.
Feel free to peruse those.
Actually, believe it or not, we could be there.
Could we? Could we?
You want to move along?
Well, I'm just saying.
Is that what you're asking?
I'm just saying, you are definitely grandfathered in, so that's not a problem right now.
Well, you know, grandfathering in though still says that there's an issue, that a tattoo shop can't come in.
But as new, as new ones come in, we will address each one as they come in, that's what I'm saying, you can't address it.
Okay, well, you know, I hope they're aware of that, you know, their process, and it's just as hard as mine was. And then it sticks and stays for.
Maybe it will be easier now that we get the zoning regulations cleared up. I think that's what we're trying to do, is to clear them up, to help you, to help all businesses.
Glad to pave the way.
Yeah, okay.
Glad to have you.
Thank you very much, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, okay, then we move on to. Do you have a report? Oh, mayor's report, okay. I'm gonna do a real quick one.
I just want to make sure my eyes are about it.
Yours off.
Thank you. First of all, real quickly, we did apply for the playground grant that we mentioned to you last time, the Blue Cross. We'll see how that comes on, we had some good letters of support from the community, we won't know until later in the year, but it would be a great non-matching 100% on their part if we got it. We started our brush pickup again, which everybody's pleased about, thank you very much, Les and all of you. It'll be the first Monday of each month, just so everybody remembers, so have that brush out there then. Mr. Les and Mr. Tim and all of his crew paved, how many feet did you pave of sidewalk?
Concrete, we didn't pave it.
Well, concrete, that's right, I got it wrong, you're right, concrete.
We paved that like yards.
Of course it is.
Concrete, sidewalks, jambs, college.
Was it new or were we replacing?
Replacing, okay.
If you've noticed that on 25 and Industrial, we, children, excuse me, we, we have the, okay, guys, guys, please, Mr. Duke, oh, I'm sorry. We have the new light again, Industrial and 25, it's, it's up and working, they are gonna come back tomorrow and put the new, the loop under there, the pressure loop that you asked for, so hopefully by tomorrow, it'll all be back like it was before. They had to redo the cabinet, and that took several weeks, and then they got back, backlogged in some of their stuff, but they were out today fixing that. They're working on the performance hall to put electricity, I don't, I think that will fairly, be fairly soon, in a couple of weeks. The Ball State classes, they've now pushed back to January, but they're still trying to get those online to do the Zoom classes, probably at the high school now, so that would be another great thing for kids coming back. We had a feral cat project here to try to round them up and get them spayed and neutered, because so many people wanted, I think so far they've gotten 29. The grant that was through Clinic in Lebanon has run out, so we're trying to see if there are other funds somewhere to finish off, because we still have several colonies of these cats here in town. And we had a really great supervisor meeting with the council, and some good things came out of that, so we appreciate that. All right, the next report is from our attorney.
I don't have anything formal, but glad to answer your questions, everybody has?
Okay, thank you, sir. City recorder, Ms. Jennifer.
I don't really have anything, you may have noticed in your packet tonight, I included, I kind of wanted to see some numbers of how the city pool did this season. So it's not fiscal year, it's gone from the beginning of the season to now, so I just thought you guys might want to look and see how attendance was, and how concessions, and all the revenues and expenses, it's one of the longer pages. We can close, but those kinds of facilities, they're not really moneymakers yet.
It's got about, almost about a $6,000 loss.
Yeah.
Okay, it's not bad.
Yeah, chemicals is what gets us.
Chemical's a big thing.
Mm-hmm.
But they had really good attendance this time.
Oh, they had a great season. Sally would tell you they had a really, really good season.
What do you think drove this season, like, the attendance this year, do you think it was that defeated creek thing?
I think that helped some, yeah.
And we, they kind of promoted it on Facebook a lot this time, because we had people there from Gordonsville who didn't, you know, we had a pool, I guess they just moved here, I don't know, but they, a lot of people from out of town who came to this, so.
And we had several passes, several season passes, I think probably more than we normally had, so, yeah.
But we do like something special next year, you buy your season pass by this time, maybe that'll drive up more season passes or something, you know, find some ways to market it, get that number.
They had a lot of parties, but, yeah, they had a lot of other parties, and that usually is a pretty good moneymaker, too. Like Jennifer says, it's, it's the chemicals, mangas and mounts, as Mr. Les knows, to keep that safe for everyone, which is important. Okay, anything else? That's all I got, all right, thank you. Steve Davis, do you have anything?
Real quick, I don't know, some of y'all may have already heard or not, Assistant Chief Brown has retired. He was, worked for the town, worked for the Carthage Police Department for 47 years.
Wow.
He's served this town, and he's been doing well, and there will be a retirement party for him coming up, we'll let everybody know, and so that way if y'all want to, you're more than welcome to. And so that means we do have an opening now, so what we'll have to do is we'll have to advertise our patrolman's position soon, and we'll have to try to fill that, so I just want to kind of give you a heads up of what's gonna fix when we take place. and we'll have to try to fill that, so I just want to kind of give you a heads up of what's going to fix when we take place.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Les, did you have anything with public works?
You got your new truck, you need to come and ride.
Oh, yeah.
New, always working out, you do.
And that's Jesse, you called him?
Yeah. Well, I have longer spare, so.
Anything, just there?
Yeah, everything's going smooth.
Okay, flushing all over, that's wonderful, okay. Oh, Ms. Teresa, the water plant, do you have?
Um, yes ma'am, I had a employee turn in his resignation unexpectedly, and so since y'all had already approved me to hire a part-time, we already had applications, and so it didn't take as long of a process. So I have a new part-time going to start next Monday to replace him, so he'll start training.
And who is that again? Who, who is your new part-time again?
Uh, Josh Duke.
Okay, thank you. Anything else there?
Oh, no.
Okay, thanks, bye. All right, thank you. Mr. Steve, wastewater?
I'll just say our new employee has started, and he's doing a wonderful job. We appreciate y'all giving us another employee down there. Last one got their new truck, so maybe next week we'll get the old truck. And that's going to open up us a chance to start a pre-annual maintenance program with the lift stations.
There you go.
With this new employee, he's very mechanically inclined, and I think that's going to help us get ahead of the game with some of this stuff. And, so we just appreciate it.
Great when we can recycle those.
That's it.
And I hear he makes a great banana pudding, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, well.
I should have never showed you that.
I know. Next time you have to bring some, okay, thank you.
He's making that syrup land.
We made a new movies episode.
I'm back, Les. Chief?
Just buy some medium report.
Anything else is going well? Fire department, okay, thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to what would have been our grant reports. As you all know, our grant writer has changed over. We've got three grant writers now from UCDD that are helping us. They've taken over Virginia Alexander's, the Downtown facade. The walking track is by Mr. Tommy Lee, who's with the UCDD. Oh, I'm sorry, Allison Fox, the walking track, excuse me, and Tommy Lee is the Turkey Creek Water Tank. They're all, have met with Dawn, transferred the papers, they're right on top of things, and things are moving along like they, they should be. And I mentioned the potential Blue Cross. We do have updates, I think this is in your packet. Yes, each of them has just put a little update, one is from Virginia, the next one is from Allison, just a little update of how they transferred over and what, where things are right now. Everything is on track moving forward with facade. Couple of different buildings are moving forward, starting the construction work. I think Mr. Evers is very close to having his Italian restaurant up and running in maybe another month or two, so that's exciting news. So that's in your packet here. We're, let's, let's move to Quill first, and then we'll go to Mr. Warren.
Um, real quick, what's the update on the walking track? What's the progress on that as far as this grant goes?
We're, we're moving forward with that. In fact, we have a, a Monday of training, Jennifer and I and Allison and with TDEC up in book of how to handle the money, so it's.
What kind of grant is that?
Well.
Like, is it a 100%, a 730, like what?
Oh, gosh, we'll have to look it up, but the, oh, but I'm glad you brought that up, because we are going to send out an RFQ for new engineer, because Mr. Warren has, I think you probably all got the, the email that he's.
But this, before we apply for this grant, the council will be able to vote on it, correct?
It's already applied for.
It's already applied, this grant's already been applied?
This is one we inherited.
Okay, yeah, that's, and that's just, that's why I'm just trying to figure out the, the matching.
I believe it's 80, 820, I don't, I think it's an 820.
What are we getting out of that?
It's a TDEC recreational trails grant.
Are we just basically trying to pave it, or?
Yeah, to pave it and add to it.
And it's widening it.
Widening it.
So widening.
And adding, I think, is that right?
Adding.
Yeah.
I mean, does this include the new parking also?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, yeah, if you don't mind, just.
It's, it's one that we, we, I think it was applied for a couple of years ago.
Yeah, okay.
So, those are the three grants that we, were already on the books when we came on. So it's the facade grant, the walking trail grant, and the Turkey Creek Water Tank.
And that Turkey Creek is the, um.
It's a 50/50 match, but that's just.
So on that Turkey Creek, that's, is that, if I'm correct, that's the one that y'all said y'all could do? Is that the one that y'all, the in-house one? Is that the one that y'all said you could do in-house, the Turkey?
No, 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 this is the water tank.
This is the water tank, not the lift station, different, okay. Gotcha, okay.
It's a smaller water tank, if you go out Turkey Creek.
Okay.
There's one already there, it's just replaced.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay. No more questions on that side, thank you.
But we, we will, just so you will know, we'll be sending an RFQ out for, to the engineers around to get a new one for the walking track trail.
If, if, if we've already done the grant thing, hasn't most of the engineering already been done for the walking track?
Yeah.
So why do we need another one to?
Well, just to oversee the rest of it, yeah, because we, we still have to bid out the construction work itself.
But we don't have to redo the engineering?
Well, the only thing was, you remember that day, we talked about maybe flipping that handicap section over, so it's not between the two houses. But that would be a simple.
It'd take any rocket scientist to figure that out.
So basically, any engineer coming on now would just take, they'd still have to do their own plans, but it would be very similar to what we have. And, and they would just, then we bid out the construction people, or the asphalt people, whoever would come in to do it. So, it's kind of that, it's very, it can be done pretty quickly, I think, at this point, once we get the engineer, is that correct?
Should, yes.
I think so. And it may come in a little bit under what we're originally thinking about too.
We have an RFQ out for the water tank project, correct?
Oh, well, that's the one.
Do we need to vote on that tonight?
That's the one.
Which water tank is that?
That's the one that Mr., that's the only one that Mr. Warren still hasn't terminated the contract. So we're kind of waiting to, I, I don't know, we're just waiting to see.
Which water tank is that?
That's the Turkey Creek.
That's the one we're all, okay.
Yeah, yeah, there's only three projects, Turkey Creek Water Tank, Downtown Facade, and the walking track.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, now we do, we do just want to talk about what the process would be. Do we want to talk about the invoices for you later? It's, you put it under grant report. Okay, yeah. Okay. Both of theirs. Let's talk about Dawn's first, if you don't mind.
Well, the only thing, you handle whatever order, but at some point I would like to just discuss the status of the water tank project and the direction moving forward, whether with Mr. Warren or with the RFQ.
You want to go ahead?
Well, and I think, I don't know if you've all seen the email that was received from Mr. Warren this afternoon with respect to the reports, and as the mayor just said, this is a contract that is still pending with Warren and Associates for the engineering on the Turkey Creek project. I was contacted by an attorney representing their firm today, who just said that Mr. Warren wouldn't be here, but he did want to express that he was still willing to complete the project under the contract for the town, or if the town wanted to go in a different direction, he would be glad to facilitate the transition of that to, to complete the project. And I didn't have any information as to what direction the council would want to move, so that's just, I think, an item that you could decide on tonight as far as how you want to move forward on that project.
I, I definitely, I don't know if we're going to go into Dawn or Jerry yet, but I've got, I'd like to share what we all learned at our last meeting that wasn't, um, you know, that our last meeting that we had that wasn't like on video or anything. I'd like to share, and I don't know if this is appropriate time or not, to share what we all learned, basically about some of the disturbing things that happened. I don't know if this is appropriate time to do that or not.
Do you, I just wanted to get that, at least get that in front of you so we address it at some point.
If it pertains to whether we want to keep him as an engineer?
Yes.
I guess it would be appropriate, yes.
Yes. Take about five minutes, because I wanted to get this kind of broken down, so it wasn't so confusing for the public to understand what was going on. I wanted to talk about our past issues with several engineering projects that have now officially come to light during a meeting we had with city employees last month. These are issues that the public deserves to know about. I've waited to gather complete information and sources, and now that this information is known, I feel it is my duty to share this information with the public. The conversation starts at the city's water treatment plant back in 2017. The city engineer Jerry Warren had recently approached the mayor about a project involving a grit chamber installation for the water plant.
I said, could you say, not, not the current mayor?
Approached the mayor in 2017.
The former mayor.
The former mayor in 2017. This project was to take several months at the cost of over half a million dollars. When the plant managers were approached about the project, they gave their humble opinion that the chamber was not needed. A grit chamber is a mechanism that collects grit that accumulates over time. Going against the recommendations of the plant workers, a grant was approved and the chamber was installed at the cost of over half a million dollars. That's not the messed up part. After leaning on expert advice of the city engineering firm, Warren and Associates, the mayor and the council voted to install the grit chamber, which ended up being a sewer grit chamber inside of a water plant. Obviously, these experts were wrong. Now, Toronto Carthage has a $500,000 piece of equipment installed in the incorrect facility, which is cleaning out a whopping few handfuls of grit per year. Once the problem was realized, the plant's workers were told by the prior administration that this project's in the past, let's just move forward. This one project would seem enough to make a few heads turn. Well, the opposite happened, more contracts were awarded. We move across Upper Ferry Road, down towards the river, where huge pumps suck up water from the Cumberland River all the way up into the treatment plant. These pumps have been historically oil-cooled pumps. Explained oil-cooled pumps, they're typically used as they're better at reducing friction between motor components and it decreases damage to the pump, where water can cause rusting in the inner parts of the motor. It's also much easier to maintain an oil-cooled pump. While this was all explained to the city engineer by our water department, it was largely ignored. Incomes are $50,000 worth of water-cooled pumps at the cost of $10,000 to convert it over to a clean water flush system. Then the maintenance problems begin. The seals immediately begin to crack as the water-cooled pumps were specifically designed for potable water, not river water. These seals start being replaced at the rate of three times a year at $2,500 per seal. The warranty only covered two to three seals. Two failed projects down, we move back over to the sewer plant, where a real problem was occurring. The plant operator suggested that the lines were clogged and they needed a simple cleaning. The city engineer suggested that we remove and replace existing transfer pumps and motors with the new pumps to be completed in place. Since the project was imminent, Steve Key and Ricky Brown, the plant supervisors, suggested that the lines be cleaned prior to the brand-new pumps being installed. This suggestion was ignored, the pumps were installed at the cost of $34,000. After the pumps were installed, the problems still continued, to the point where the engineer nor the contractors would come back out to fix it. So this was fixed in-house. If this wasn't enough, it was suggested that a new flume be installed. The flume was bought and paid for, as well as the labor, we wrote the check for it. Things seemed to be on track until the workers who took out the old flume never returned, nor was a proper flume ever installed. At $20,000, the city ended up purchasing a piece of plywood, to which we can provide pictures of. So $20,000 piece of plywood. This contract was rewarded with yet another contract for a new variable speed drive, which was installed in an area that should have been in a bigger box. Then more actuators were installed at an unknown cost without even asking city employees. This business's usual policy repeated itself over and over in the years between 2017 and 2018. The city even hired Mr. Warren as the city building inspector to the detriment of many businesses. Several complaints were filed as Mr. Warren was cited to fail inspections over and over and over again. Mr. Warren was paid per inspection, meaning there is a financial incentive to fail people. Once inspections were failed, Mr. Warren would come back later and hint at private engineering services to fix problems. When relaying information to buildings, builders, many suggestions were presented as codes. Many businesses would follow codes all the way up until the final inspection, where new codes would be brought up, costing businesses thousands more so that they could meet grand opening deadlines. Irrevocable lines of credit to the city of Carthage were used to intimidate businesses to comply with codes, many of which didn't know if these were actual codes or if they were suggestions, benefiting Warren and Associates. Mr. Warren even went as far as to signing off on bills to be paid for by the city accounts of Carthage after being instructed not to do so by the city recorder at the time. There is documentation on this. After all of this, Mr. Warren, well, was a city engineer, there are currently three projects he is bidding, an I&amp;I project on Spring Street, a main line, water connection across Third and Main on the squares, where is a project known as the Turner Farm Lift Station. I'm going to get into the former two, but let's dive into the latter. The form, if I can finish, please.
Those are not projects anymore.
Okay, they're not projects anymore, okay, but I want to still talk about what these projects were, because we need these projects. The Turner Farm Lift Station basically needs to replace a coupler suction and discharge valves, as well as the dehumidifier and bubbler system. This project was turned into a $425,000 grant project, which would require a city loan. City employees turned this information over to the new administration, which immediately looked for solutions. The city received two bids for $100,000 and $85,000 of average for the exact same project. City employees looked into the parts needed and said they could install this in-house for a cost of $15,000. This would be a price difference of $410,000. So I think we all owe our city employees a big thank you for that one. The next two projects on the docket, which are things that we need, are priced at $412,000 for the water line connection and $375,000 for a sewer repair to be formed by the same Warren and Associates. We've had two bids from around $200,000 and $100,000 from two other engineers for the exact same project on the water line connection. In the past several years, not one other engineer, not one, has been hired. Warren and Associates have been on every single bid and/or contract awarded to them, every single one. Many of these projects, the money was found first, the need or lack of need was found last. This has got to stop. It's unethical, it's wrong, this does nothing to advance our city. It takes our taxpayer dollars and funnels it into the pockets of one single company, Warren and Associates. There are four projects we've got to get done. These are, the, these are projects are what we need to do to move on, and I advocate we get them done at a much lower cost. I don't think we need to do any more business with Warren and Associates, nor would I advocate any other town in Smith County do business with them either. So, I guess to move into this, I'd like to make a few motions tonight. The first motion I would like to, motion that we terminate any further contract with Warren and Associates regarding the current project, any current projects on the books. I would like to do a roll call, written vote on this, with the votes to be read publicly after they are cast.
Okay.
So that's a motion on the table.
So the motion is to terminate the one contract left with Mr. Warren, which is the water tank project. Do I hear a second to that motion?
I'll second for a vote, I think we're going to a vote in one.
Right. Motion is made in second, is there any discussion?
I'd like, I'd like to do a roll call, written vote on this. We write it down, and then we read the vote afterwards, like we did with the city attorney when we did that.
You can make a motion, that is a separate motion to have a roll call.
I had that in my original motion. That was in my original motion.
That is a separate motion to have a roll call. Second on that?
Well, you put it in your original motion, he had it in his original motion that's been seconded.
Okay, I take that back, okay. So the original motion is to have, to terminate the one contract that we have with Mr. Warren for the Turkey Creek Water Plant, just, excuse me, Water Tank, and that we do it by a roll call, written?
And it's official that this is the only project we have with them, correct?
Okay, is it written or a roll call? You want a roll call?
I'll reread the motion.
So the motion was to terminate any kind, any contract. Understanding is that the only pending contract that's left is the water tank.
Any further contract with Warren and Associates regarding any current project on the books. I would like to do a roll call, written vote on this, with the votes to be read publicly after they're cast.
That is the motion, any further, we've got a second, any further discussion about that? If not.
The only thing would be, like, if we, if we do terminate, we'll probably get a bill for more stuff, just, so, I'm just.
But we'll address.
I don't know where you want to go, I mean. I think we've paid millions of dollars.
Terminating at this point.
But we've got, we've got a bunch of work in it already, so.
So about what, what costs are we still looking at?
We're looking at someone who has a.
I'm asking her, please.
We, we do, we are going to address his invoices in just a minute. The actual cost of, is it $220?
But those don't include the water tank, that's what you're asking about.
No, 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 I'm correct. The water tank itself, it's, the whole project's a 200-something, I don't have, I would have to look at it. I brought everything else.
This is a company that. This is a company that bails in the middle, in the end of projects. I don't, I don't, I don't see, I mean, it's, it's not just once, it's not just twice, it's not just three times, it's six times, this has happened.
We still want to look at costs. What's it going to cost to do this?
Absolutely, how much is it going to cost to keep us, keep this guy who keeps straining our money on?
All right, let's pull that out, because that is part of the question about this.
Let me, let me go.
I can just, I can answer things too.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, if we cancel this, do we have to start over the project, and is that going to delay any kind of?
I think.
Is that going to delay any kind of requirements? I know we've got to get this tank repaired quickly, so I'm just wondering how that would affect my.
And again, my, the brief conversation I had with his counsel was that he would work with the town to transition, and according to the email this afternoon, he's saying that the project plans have been delivered to the town for review, I don't know where we are in the process of that.
Yeah, the plans are already here and ready, and I think, I think.
I want to get it done.
An engineer should probably step up and take that forward.
Presumably, once an RFQ was put out and a new engineer was hired, it wouldn't, but, yes, I'm sure Mr. Warren would make a claim for the work that he's done on the project today.
We, I can look and see the specific amount. I will interject, I think I gave y'all something last time, and I've got to hear it again if you need it, but when we compare the fees based on the actual project work that's been done, we've found that they're higher than the standard USDA-approved fees for Mr. Warren. And it's been consistent throughout all of his work, it's been two to three times higher than the USDA-approved fees would be.
We need to get the project done, we need to do it cheaper. I think even with his fees, we're looking at it being done cheaper, just historically, he's 200% higher on everything, and historically, he's gone and we don't get help when it's done. And I'd rather it be done by someone who has a record of efficiency and consistency, not the person who has literally the worst record for almost every project and has cost our city. I mean, let's talk about money, let's talk about a half a million dollar paperweight setting up a water plant that can't even be used. I'd like to see where that money is at.
Yes, sir.
Do we, is this a grant that UCDD could carry on, or would it have to be an actual engineering firm? What stage are we at?
We would need an engineer.
We will, okay.
I'm sorry, when I asked, did I say UCDD, USDA, that's what I was talking about, they've got a standard of approved rates, and I think I gave you all that.
No, but I was talking about.
You were discussing about the grant?
Yeah.
Yeah, the grant is being taken over by Tommy Lee.
Yeah, it's going on, and he's, he's very capable, yeah.
The issue is just an engineer.
Yeah. And basically, at this point, all the engineer would do is take the plans, basically, and then we would send out a request for, proposal to construction companies to bring in the water tank and put it there. It's pretty much prefab is what I'm understanding, and you just, they put it together on site and that's pretty much it, yeah. So, it's just an engineer to step in and finish the project. Basically, when we bid up, bid it out, he or she would then sit down with us and say, here are the bids, and we'd get the lowest bid, and he would oversee then that it was done properly.
Would Tommy Lee be able to give us any input as to helping this decision for us?
We have, they've given us a huge slew of engineers. When we do an RFQ, we just send it to everybody in the area who's qualified, and then their qualifications come in, and they're already, I think, I gave you some stuff, five or six that have already stopped by who are quite qualified for any kind of water or water tank. So there's, just right in the midstate, there's four or five that have already left off their stuff here. But we have to formally put out a request for qualifications, so everybody can respond who wants to respond. Not everybody must respond, but then it's based not on their price so much, but on their qualifications for that particular project. And that's, I agree with you, each of our projects, hopefully going forward, will do this process to find the right engineer for each, each project, depending on what that is.
See, that is, I see what Cole's saying, and, you know, cut your losses, but I also understand, Jack wants to talk about, you know, what we're going to have, what's it going, how much are we going to have to pay him, versus then how much more to, you know, it's, it was big unknown there.
It would be, we'd be wise, I think, to know what those costs are going to be and be able to weigh them out before we make that decision.
If you hold just a second, I can go pull that up.
Are you talking about to pay him off, to pay off his, what he's done?
No, not to pay off what he's done, but to start over with another engineer, we'd be wise to look at those costs.
I just don't, I mean, if we want to vote, we can, I just, it feels like a, I see where Cole's coming from 100%, I just don't want to knee-jerk on it either.
And I definitely, that's why.
And that's, that's my only thing.
And I don't, I don't want y'all to knee-jerk, which is why I did try to put all these facts in here, and if we're looking at, if you want to do price differentials, I mean, we're looking at per project, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars, so if it's not going to be a couple hundred thousand dollars, we could be saving $150,000 to move.
It's true, it'd be good to know that.
Yeah. Under the circumstances of the discussion that y'all placed, I would like to rescind my second on it for now, until we know a little more about it, if that's possible.
I don't think you can rescind a second, but here's what I'd be willing, here's what I'd be willing to, is, and I think this is fair, let's look at, let's look at the numbers, and then vote on it based on the numbers.
I've got them right here, let me.
But we don't know what the RFQ.
We don't know what the new cost will be.
We don't know what the RFQ is on it.
We don't, we don't know what the overall is.
We, we don't know what the new RFQ cost is going to be, we, we don't know, because we haven't, we haven't put it out there.
And I believe we can send out an RFQ and then terminate the contract once we have any information.
So let's, I mean, we can vote on this now, and that's fine, because it's already out there, we have to vote on it, but unless you want to.
We can table it and vote on it after we have the information.
When I withdraw my motion?
You can.
Okay. I mean, I want you to do what you want to do.
Yeah.
I just, I know, me personally, I just don't want it, even, even what we're about to see, like, we wasted money before, which we probably have, I don't want to waste any more than we have to, if we can do an RFQ and get more, if it.
Yeah, so.
We can still do that.
Yeah, in the spirit, in the spirit of putting y'all's minds at ease, I'm still going to vote again, let me, let me finish, I'm, I'm about to do something. In the spirit.
May I give you the information you asked for?
Yeah, let's get that first.
Yeah, here's the whole thing, the whole process would, well, again, the cost that he has estimated and the actual construction cost are two different things. The actual construction cost reads out as 2,000, 205,000. Now, here's, here's the problem, if you go to the USDA rates, the highest for anything like this would be 10%. So 10% of 2,000, 205,000 would be around 20,910. I gave you all these sheets in the meeting, after the meeting, the way I had. He's asking engineering fees for 72,000, and this is what I'm saying, it's been consistent with each of these projects, if you look at the fees that he's asked as opposed to what the USDA fee chart says he can get, it's, it's like 400, well, it's close to the 500,000 we've been talking about as opposed to about 175,000.
And that's what I'm talking about, but, but again, in the spirit of cooperation, because I, I want you all to make a vote based on real facts and real numbers, which you want to get. We do, we do requests, we do.
May we sit here from the supervisor before we totally do this?
Well, can I, I'm just trying to finish what I've been saying for two minutes, okay? I will, I will withdraw my motion, and based on, we get that, we get that RFQ out there, okay? So that way you all can see it, and you all can feel comfortable as far as, well, this is what it costs a new RFQ, this is what it will be cost, this is what, can I, can I please finish?
But that's not how it works.
Okay, can I please?
RFQ is not about money.
Okay, can I please finish? Thank you, I appreciate it. All right, so we get it out there, we find out what these new bids would be, right?
No, no, you don't, that's not what.
Can I finish?
No, Cole, you're sitting, you're going in the wrong direction, I'm sorry. An RFQ is for.
Motion to have one minute of uninterrupted speaking, please.
But you're, you're telling the wrong information, Cole.
I can second that, and then they can review.
Okay, all right, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, I would like to get that information so that you all can make a decision based on weighing the numbers of what the new possible cost could be against what it would be to terminate this cost with Warren and Associates. Because I do want us to be in agreeance on this, I'm not trying to shove something down, I, I think, I think it's possible, no one here knew this was going on, okay? And so I think this is a good chance to correct or right a wrong that, you know, we had, and I think it's a good chance, and so, in the spirit of that, I'd like to withdraw my motion from the table, and then we can revisit this at the next council meeting.
Would you like to say?
Yes, so, and I think this may be what you were going to say, I think that is, the motion's withdrawn.
Yes.
So, just so, and I, I think y'all understand, what we're, it's likely to happen is that RFQ is put out, and maybe the next motion would be to go ahead and do an RFQ to finish this project, then you will get new cost estimates to take the project from where it stands now, based upon the plans and specifications that you have, including new estimates of construction cost from these engineers, but it's not a bid, you're not, you're not awarding that, or not approving a new engineer based upon their cost or proposed cost, it's based upon their qualifications. But it will give you some insight, they'll be able to tell you, particularly if the RFQ is written, what the additional cost to the town should be moving forward, and then in addition to that, we may, should also be able to get from Mr. Warren what his fees are claimed through tonight, so.
Just for clarification, can we send an RFQ while we're already with Mr. Warren? We can.
Based on the will of the council, yes, I think it's perfectly appropriate, and he's offered that to help in the transition.
We're just asking for calls.
Yep. I think that's, and I think that's fair that they give those costs.
I wouldn't award a, I wouldn't award a new contract until this issue is resolved, but you can ask for qualifications to finish the project.
Okay, but, but, just so we're clear on this, an RFQ is only for qualifications, it's not for bids.
Correct.
The bids would go out once we have the engineer, then you bid it out to a construction company. So, I understand what you're saying, but RFQs don't give you the cost for an engineer.
Right.
For RFQ and bid, so we want to do that before we terminate this. I think it's, I mean, again, I'm, I'm voting against it because on different things besides cost, because of, I feel like we're going to be left in the dirt. But I feel that the council here wants to see the cost comparison, I think that's fair to give them the cost comparison that they're asking, they're willing to work on this, I say we give it to them and, and work on them.
Okay, just so, so we're really doing that, that's all I'm asking, is if we send out an RFQ request for qualification, they don't give us monetary bids, it's just they send in their engineering qualifications for this project.
I, I will make a motion to send out an RFQ, start, get this, get the ball rolling, because we need this done for Turkey Creek.
So you withdrew your motion.
I withdrew that motion, I'm doing a new motion, getting RFQ on this project.
But you're saying we still won't have the costs?
We won't have costs, once we have the RFQ, then we can make a motion to go after bids, and then you all will have the number to work on, so.
Okay, the only other question would be, whatever progress we've got with water tank, are we just halting?
We're just halting.
Whatever we're doing? And Teresa, are we in any kind of?
That was my question.
I mean, are we going to be like in a compliance issue? I don't know, I know the tank has to be replaced.
It does.
I don't know, like, if we're on like this, are we like on borrowed time?
Well, that's what I was wondering, if you find out costs, you could also find out how much of a delay it would be.
Right, because I, I don't know, like, are we getting ready to get fined if we don't have it put in place or something, or?
Well, they didn't mention it on our last survey, just because the fact they knew we were getting a new one.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been mentioned for a long time.
I just don't want to be holding up, you know, I don't want to put ourselves in a bind.
Let's move, let's move on it fast, let's get it done.
What's the possibility, if we do send out the RFQ, and how, is it two weeks, what's the usual time for it to be?
Yeah, no less than, I'd say 10 or 15 days.
Okay, as we get those back in, I can either alert you to who these people are, if you want to come in and talk about it, we can do either way, and then we'll have a comparison, so it'd be a couple of weeks we're talking about, if we get this out right away. I'll try to get it out tomorrow, we've got some examples we can use to get those out. They've already, UCDD will help us get those out very quickly to all the engineers, if we need to, then we'll have.
Does that even need to be a motion then, or you know, RFQ?
I would do it.
Okay.
So you made a motion for my?
Yeah, motion on table for RFQ.
Second.
For an engineer?
Yes. And that's for that specific, that specific project.
Okay, the motion's been made, seconded, any further discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so we will move forward as quickly as possible tomorrow to get that out. Okay, thank you, and then moving on, we have.
Do, I don't know if this is appropriate or not right now, do we have RFQs already out there for Third and Main and the I&amp;I project?
Well, okay, let's talk about that when we get the new loans, because.
Okay, tell me when that's appropriate, talk about it.
Yeah, it's really good, we've got a possibility here. Okay, so we've talked about that, again, for the grant writers, it's the same process, if we bring new projects in, we won't do it now because we've got grant writers, but if we say, for instance, we are looking at a grant for a bay, an additional bay down here, I've put out the word to several grant writers in the area, they're looking around, and when something pops up, then we'll, we'll get on board, if that's the right thing, we'll get on board and let you know what's possibility out here. So, that's kind of how that, it's a similar process, you send out a letter to grant writers, so, okay, moving on here, unfinished business, we have.
You skipped over it.
Did I skip over, I'm sorry?
You skipped over the invoices.
Oh, invoices, well.
That's right.
Okay, so we have invoices for Quill, she has, these are her final invoices, if you've had a chance to take a look at them. Come to a total of, how much is total? There's, there's three separate ones, one for the facade improvement, and that's 350 left on that, one's for, and another on the facade, $550. Then there's one left on the Turkey Creek Water Tank, we could close out, that is 900, $4,050 total, and then.
A motion to approve the Quill and Associates' second.
Okay. Motion is made, is seconded, any discussion to approve all of them?
Yes, yes, all of them.
For Quill.
Okay, then all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? If the motion carries, we will pay first. Okay, we have then some other invoices here that we do need to talk about pretty closely. We've got the two letters here, one of his terminating, Mr. Warren's terminating his contract as a general engineer, then he's got one here terminating the walking trail project, so that's the first one, we'll look at that particular invoices, 1,500. So I guess there's another one here, is there more than one?
I think it's where he sent.
Okay, it's 1,500 for that one.
Should we take these individuals?
Yes.
Would you like to take these individuals?
Yeah, I was taking individuals.
Is that okay with everyone? Okay, so the first one is his closeout on the walking trail, which would be 1,500, you see that? That's his letter for terminating that contract, and then attached invoice for 1,500, that's for the walking trail. Do you want to have a motion concerning that one?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, motion approved, is seconded, all, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so that, that closes out the walking trail portion with Mr. Warren. Okay, the next two are the other two others, and that's, one is for the water line, proposed water line, and one is for the proposed sewer line. I do want to add something to this, and then even add some more, as you see, they're each around, wait, I take that back, there's another, no. These two are all with this letter of termination, and then there's the, where's the other? Forty-two thousand, okay, yes, there's, there are two attached, one is for the water line, which he, again, on here, which I gave all, to all of you, he wanted, you know, it's four hundred and twenty-five thousand, he estimated for that.
What's the?
As you remember, there was another, two other engineers, so that it could be done for a hundred and fifty thousand or under, so that's part of the concern we have right here, is the I and I.
What's the USDA, whatever the USDA rate that they were saying on that was the highest?
I'll tell you, hold on, okay, so he wanted four hundred and twelve thousand for that one water line, the other engineers said it could be done for a hundred and fifty thousand max, because it's basically a thousand feet of water, and you kind of guesstimated it's a hundred feet, a hundred dollars per foot, so it'd be a hundred thousand dollars plus a couple of hydrants. All right, his particular bid on this one, and that's on the sheet I gave y'all, we, well, actually, the construction cost, when you really come down to it, it'd probably only be three hundred and five, even though he estimated it four hundred and twelve, he wants a hundred, a hundred and seven thousand for the fees, the USDA top ten percent would have been, or nine percent on this one, would have been about twenty-five thousand.
And he wants how much?
He wants.
A hundred and seven thousand. Well, that's total, he's, this is his portion, but I want to show you what he's charging for. Same thing on the sewer line, if you look at that, he's.
I'm in the wrong business.
That's what I was saying.
Good lord.
Okay, the sewer line, his estimate was three hundred and seventy-five upfront, and then the actual construction cost was estimated, it was three hundred and five thousand.
This particular invoice.
He wanted engineering fees of a hundred and seven thousand, the USDA approved would be twenty-five, around twenty-five thousand.
Mayor Smith, we're talking, just because we're doing my math, what, the sewer, the I and I, what is the, what is the, what is the maximum amount they reckon the USDA?
Again, this is for the whole project.
The whole project, we can't get a breakdown?
Well, let me show you, though, I've got something in it. What he's asking, the forty-two thousand dollars, is basically this. Okay, here's for the, here's for, here's what he turned in, guys. Sam, everybody, sorry, this is what he turned in for that four hundred and twenty-five thousand water line and two sewer. This basically, normally when you just turn something into, these are loans, by the way, this is a state revolving fund loan with TDEC, this is kind of the size that they normally turn in as engineers, we're charged per page, pretty much, on this, so this one is kind of a standard that he does, and then there's something inserted in the middle here, so for this booklet that he sent to TDEC, plus one basic design, and it's, if you want to see, it's just a basic straight water line, as I say, most people have said that in our water department, up to a thousand feet, you can almost do in-house, but that's what we have here. He is asking, what is that, forty, for the, for the water line, or just these two things, forty-one thousand dollars.
A hundred feet of water line?
Well, no, 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 this is.
According to this, that's just for the water line, it's forty-one thousand.
Forty-one.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, Sam, this is all he's turned in, he's asking forty-one thousand.
It's a hundred feet of water line.
Right, but that, that's separate from what he's asking in this bill.
I get it, I'm doing a breakdown per foot on what we paid you every one.
Well, all I'm saying is, this is all he's turned in to TDEC, and if you remember, the letter that TDEC sent us, neither of these was ever approved, these are state revolving fund loans that were never approved, so he sent us in the letter that we, in fact, I've got a copy, to remind y'all.
Hundred, no, it's a thousand.
It's a thousand, okay.
If you remember, this is the letter that, I think I sent y'all all copies of, from TDEC way back, it came in in November of last year, before we came into office, the new ones here.
That's forty-two dollars, thirty-five cents per.
It basically says that the city cannot get these loans unless we up our rates, water and sewer, and we increase our income by a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars every single year, and that was for the four hundred thousand and the three thousand, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, which, we're talking about three quarters of a million dollars for one water line and one sewer line. So that's what he's now saying, we owe him forty-one thousand dollars, again, for this. That's all, that's all he turned in, was a book and a blueprint.
These two, I mean.
So let me go into the next, let me go to the next, so we're all on the same page, okay?
Well, I thought we were doing one at a time.
We are, but let me show you how it all fits in together, because it's the same thing, it was the same, they applied to the same state revolving fund loan, so this is what this says from the state, they never approved these loans, so this never went forward, and then we terminated those loans, and if you remember, so we could get the better, well, the new ones that have just come out, and we'll talk about it in a minute. So, the same thing, for the sewer line, here's what he turned in, Spring Street Sewer Improvement Blueprint, he wants forty, what, two thousand dollars for that, forty-two thousand dollars for that. That's all he turned in. So all I'm saying is, guys, that's all we have.
So that's eighty-three thousand, eight-four thousand?
I don't know about you, but I'm not going to pay that kind of public money for that, I mean, that's just ludicrous. They didn't go forward with this loan, it was, it was an application for a loan, that's all it was. We finally said, okay, let's drop that application, so we can get these new state revolving fund loans that have principal forgiveness in them, that are really good loan rates, so I believe we're going to have to kind of, it's been suggested to me, we may even have to do a forensic audit, just to see what really should be charged for this at this point in time. This, this does not, I mean, sorry, we can't pay public money to that, for that amount, for what we're seeing here, I just don't think that, that would not, wouldn't be right, probably not even legal, I'm not sure how that works, but we need to find out a little bit more, so if we could just kind of, if we could kind of hold off on these invoices and not pay them right now.
We've already approved two.
No, 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 I'm talking, no, 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 I'm talking about the forty thousand.
Just to prove the fifteen hundred.
Yeah, yeah, I'm talking about the two forty, I'm talking about eighty thousand dollars of public money, we could build a new fire hall bay down there for that.
Yeah.
Easily.
Yeah.
So.
I motion, I mean, I don't know if this is an appropriate motion, I'm, I motion we delay, delay payments on these three, the forty-two, three-five-zero, the four-one, eight-five-zero, and the eight-five-zero-zero.
And that we voted.
Is that an appropriate motion?
Yeah, I think what I would suggest is that we're going to be asking, or I tend to ask for the cost on the water tank project to date as well, it's maybe what I would, would ask you to authorize me to do, is to get more information regarding this claim for both of these large invoices, and what he's asking for, for the water tank project to date, bring that back to you, and ultimately, I think I'll, I'll suggest that you try to work out a settlement with respect to all of the claims together. Now, the contract does provide that if the town objects to an invoice, that it's supposed to pay what it doesn't object to, and then withhold the rest of it. However, I think under the circumstances, in order to get a global resolution to this, these issues and these contracts, their council would be willing to say, yeah, well, let's work on a solution. So I think delaying it's appropriate, and that's what I would propose to do between now and next month's meeting.
There is one other bill we didn't go over, just so we are all on the same page, there's this eight thousand.
I included that in the motion of delay.
So your motion was to delay.
But do you understand that that never made it to TDEC either?
I think we, I think I'd say we go through.
Okay, but I mean, this, this particular thing, TDEC never even received any of this stuff, so they, they sent us a letter, when I called them back in April, it says they've checked our records, talked with our technical staff, working on the cartridge project, we have no record of receiving.
It goes to our benefit.
Okay, well, this is the one for eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, they wanted to try to do things at the sewer plant, and Steve said, no, we don't need them there, and so that was never even received down there, and he's charging us eight thousand dollars for it, so just, so we're on the same page right now, okay.
So your motion was to delay paying invoices?
Yes, on those particular, those three particular invoices, yes ma'am.
Okay. But we are paying the others, that will be decided.
Paying the fifteen hundred, that was very.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is made, and seconded, to delay payment on those three invoices, and to our attorney, check into this.
That wasn't part of this motion yet, we'll have to make another motion as far as the attorney negotiations.
Oh, okay, okay, just to check, check, he's going to check.
I'll be glad to check.
We can make a motion after this.
If you go another direction, that's fine.
Sounds good, okay.
We got a first and a second.
Okay, all in favor of, no, delaying payment on these invoices? All opposed, great, okay, we'll do.
Now, I'll make a motion to allow our, the city attorney to enter negotiations on settling these invoices and gathering more information on the appropriate amount to settle for.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made, and seconded, any discussion? Are we all in favor? All opposed? Motion passed. Right, so now we go on to, where are we here? To the first reading of this?
No.
Second reading? Okay, the unfinished business, second reading of, sorry, zoning ordinance P dash two oh one nine oh seven one oh dash two, to amend the official zoning code to regulate the placement of accessory structures within C one zone. Dr. Dug, would you, I think you're going to speak to that, is that correct?
Yeah, basically, this, you have primary structures, principal structures rather, on a lot, you have principal structure, and you have accessory structure as well, and at this time, we really don't have an ordinance, it's just where in C one that you can put that accessory structure, so for instance, they could, you can actually stick it in the front yard if you want to, or from whatever. In the C one zone, at least the downtown area of the C one zone, there's just very few setbacks, some of the, some of the downtown buildings actually have no setbacks, they go to, you know, it's just, they're on the street, they just go from one to the other, there's no setbacks whatsoever. And in some places where there are some setbacks, and they have either a front yard or whatever, we've had a lot of problems and a lot of complaints about people putting all sorts of accessory structures in the front yard of C one. So, this particular ordinance basically says that it has to go in the rear in C one, if you have an accessory structure, it's going to be rear, rather than sticking it in front, or so to speak.
We're talking storage buildings, basically, aren't we?
Well, storage buildings, shacks that you built, whatever, you know, things that, you know, storage buildings are nice compared to some of the things that we're thinking of.
Okay.
But that's basically what it's, I mean, I can go through the answer questions or tell you more about the details or whatever, but if you want.
So, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, any further discussion on that? Right, all in favor of approving?
Fine.
All opposed? Okay, the ordinance passes on second reading. Thank you. Okay, we've already had the update on the, that we're going to have that traffic signal working, hopefully up and working by tomorrow, totally, with the pressure.
Loop?
Yes, pressure loop. Okay, do we have the lease for the youth and family resources, they're part of the Stevens Building, I think we said, it's basically the same lease that Mr.
That I think we had presented in June, maybe, I have changed the dates to reflect the October first term for the new lease. Now, in the original draft, I did think we had a one-year term for the spot as well, so it'd be up to the council to determine what the term should, that should be.
We did a three-year term for the, for the other part of the Stevens Building, and this would be the old post office center where the, the spot is located, so we're suggesting a three-year contract on that too, or that's, or lease agreements, sorry. Anyway, start, did we put that language in?
I think the original, I had done another draft with just a blank as far as the termination date, but I think that document still says one year.
Okay, this one still says first of July, so we change it to first of October, okay.
If the city of the spot wants to exit out of it, how long do they have?
It's still the ninety days.
Ninety days.
Ninety days.
Okay. Do I have a motion to?
We're talking about both of them, right?
Well, no, they've already, we already passed the museum.
Yeah, we did the museum last.
So this would be just for, because they, they had an ongoing lease from before, that didn't, didn't stop until October, so what we're doing is, just now, we're renewing a lease with them through the next three years.
Did you say it needed to be updated to three years?
I have one that's blanked, but we can, we can do it to three years, yes, the final lease will have that.
Actually, this does have three years on it.
Or does?
But I know how.
That may have been the original, original.
I think we did start out three years.
But it does say July, it does say July, so we'll change it to October first, okay, great. I'm sorry, motion and second, do we have that?
Motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we can sign that, come soon, I guess, as soon as we get the new one, all right, thank you. Then we go to upgrades, okay, the fire hall, we talked a little bit about that, we still are looking for some grants out there, I have the word out with about three or four grant writers who are looking, seeking, we may save them on, on some of these invoices, we could just pay for it anyway, right, if we don't have to pay, sorry, I'm being silly here. Okay, next one, paving, we've already talked about that a little bit with Mr. Les, we've done the great.
Brooke, sorry, can we go back to that, fire hall bay, you said you, we don't know anything about?
I've got it out with three different grant writers, just the word out there, and they're looking to see if there's an appropriate grant.
So we'll get update on next month, okay, good deal, thank you.
I, I'm pretty sure we'll find something, and what their, I think their last estimate was, I have to look, I think it was sixty or seventy thousand, wasn't that right? It would be a steel, if we go with a steel building, basically, it's just a big old.
It's a pole barn.
It's a pole barn, with some insulation, yeah, okay, all right. And then we can move the big old engine out of our public works area, and over at EMS, and have them all together, we could go and laugh there. Okay, all right, thank you.
Subtle place.
Okay, so, okay, brush disposal, we pretty much know now, we're getting it every Monday, so.
We get, did you cover the paving sidewalks?
Well, that's, that's what we were talking about, they did, how many, they were feed yards or whatever.
All right, how much is it costing us for this brush disposal?
Zero.
Zero dollars, okay, so just basically the same thing as we had before?
Well, no, we were having to pay to go to the landfill, and they don't want our brush anymore, and so.
Explain, can you explain to the public and the council what, how that works?
Well, let me, I will explain something first, just let me throw this out, when we, when we talked to TDEC and had all of our conferences with Mayor Mason, TDEC's suggestion was, if somehow they could get a chipper out there, whether it was a combination us paying and they paying, whatever, they could take the chip brush, which we could give them for the lifetime of the landfill, use those chips and mix it in with the gravel they're having to buy, which is very expensive, to do the roads all through the landfill, and cut their cost in half, and I suggested that to Mayor Mason. For some reason, he didn't, he didn't go for it, so they could have saved and still could, if.
I mean, what are we currently doing? That's.
We are, we are putting in, we actually have some land somewhere that we realized, discovered we can put it on, and so it's being disposed right now, properly.
Okay.
It's properly being disposed, it's, it's not far from the landfill.
Can you dispose where it is?
Well, I'm afraid everybody in the world would start putting their brush out there if we did that, but it is totally proper, we've had it checked out and everything, it's, it's just.
Well, I'm, I'm excited about what's about to happen.
I tell you what.
This is a magical place that we're talking about here.
Well, and the other thing, we, let me throw this out, because I did send y'all something about some cream, some cream. It's his cannabis place where we just dump, no, I'm just kidding.
Well, hope not.
We do have a young man, the other part of this is there, there's a farming technique now, where you literally can do a long trench and put your brush in it and cover it with, with dirt, and it doesn't vary.
So it's a private, it's a private property, okay, so it's a private property?
And he's, he may even do some at our park, just to show this is a, it's a green recycling way of doing it that they do in Europe, and he came to me and said.
That's what they did just about.
Yeah.
Do we have, do we have this in writing, do we have this in writing agreement with them, or is it a handshake agreement?
Oh, he's just going to volunteer and help us, if we need this, you know, if we do it at our parking area.
If it goes to the park, we need to vote on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, but right now, we're just, I mean, if, I just want to make sure we're not, I mean, I think it's great, if we're getting rid of brush and it's not costing us any money, heck yeah, I'm all about it.
It's our own property.
Just want to make sure they come back and buy this.
Well, I've checked it out, it's totally proper, it's our own property.
All right.
It's not where anybody would ever see it, basically.
All right, well, I have no, it's all, we're good, everybody's getting their brush taken care of.
It's very close to the landfill, we own some property very close to the landfill. Okay, okay, I am saying restoration, though.
Very magical.
Oh, gosh, anyway, we're not trying to be, moving on, here we have new business, first read, did we just do that? No, first reading of ordinance. No, first reading of ordinance, kind of lot of ordinance. P-0190814, parenthesis one dash one, titled, "An Ordinance to Update Sections of and Correct Errors in the Previous Ordinance Number 459" That Amend Official Zoning Code of the Town of Carthage, Tennessee. Dr. Duke, would you like to speak to that?
This is the one about the tattoo parlor, and basically, we went through the minutes, although she said check out the minutes, that it was never voted on. It was, at least in the minutes, never said anything about it being voted on completely, it may have been, but it wasn't in minutes. And the ordinance itself was never, was never signed, or at least we can't even find the ordinance except what's on the word processor. So, basically, it's, you know, the ordinance is unenforceable as it was. So, basically, this is the very same ordinance as the other one, the only exception to this one compared to the one that was there before is that this one comes under special use permission. There's two classifications when you start looking at putting something zoning. It's just general use or special use permission. The general use comes, when we set, when these codes were set and zones were set, they reclassified each one of these zones with like a general description of what fits in that zone. And so, the things that are in use, not special use permitting, that you can just, you know, that you can put there as long as you get all the setbacks and everything right and you put in there, that comes under the general classification, it fits that general classification. Some things don't fit with that general classification, and this particular one didn't fit with that, so did not fit. The used car lot didn't fit with it either in the particular zone. So, in those cases, what you do is you use to put it in the use, special use permitting. That doesn't mean that it's, that you're not going to do it, and in fact, he probably contested this. Variance is usually if you go for a variance and you decline a variance, or you go ahead and give somebody a variance, and usually, that kind of sticks. But you, or deny a variance, it sticks, but if, on special use permission, usually, even if that goes to court, if you've denied it, they turn that over for the most part. So, the only thing is, is that it just comes under a little bit different classification. The only thing we're going to be looking at, it has nothing to do with the medical end, nothing to do with how sanitary it is, that is not under our purview whatsoever. It has to do with anything that comes under our zoning code, but so, if whatever comes in meets under our zoning code, then it's going to go through like that, and there's no problem with it whatsoever. So, it's really not any different from the other one, it's just under a little bit different classification. Because it can fit the general classification, if that makes sense.
So, do I hear a motion concerning this?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, motion and second to accept this on the first reading? Do I hear any discussion?
Just a quick point on it, you know, and it might be a mute point. I just want to be careful that, and I want, we all want our business here, that we don't get in the business of picking and choosing winners and losers, you know, if another, I just wouldn't say it'd be fair just to let her have a tattoo shop and not someone else, or same with the car lot and not let somebody else, you know? So, that's just kind of why, that's why I object to, but I understand, we talked about this at the planning commission, so I just wanted to make that note is all, so.
I think it's fair to say that this council is very pro-business and presently, and I think will remain, you know, for you.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right. One opposed, okay, then that passes on first reading. Hi, here's the document. Hazardous, no, you're still got a whole nother ordinance. Number two.
Municipal Planning Commission.
We just did one, but this is another one. All right, here we go again, okay, first reading of ordinance P-20190814, parenthesis two dash one, titled, "An Ordinance to amend the official zoning code of the town of Carthage, Tennessee to allow the Municipal Planning Commission to review sites for plans conformity to the zoning code." Site, excuse me, site plans conformity, for conformity to the zoning code, excuse me. Basically, Dr. Duke, explain that we're in civil terms.
It's pre-up agency, and I know it looks confusing, the reason why it's pre-up agency is because this is mentioned throughout the whole zoning code, so it's in different places. Essentially, the reason this is, this is brought forth, the building inspector we have now, we're, they're, we're having some problems with building permits being given out when they don't meet codes. And we're not talking about little, we're talking about a whole lot not meeting the code. And so, and a lot of these are businesses, so what the thing that a lot of cities do, not just our city, but a lot of cities do, in cases like this, they have, they have the planning commission, have the site plans actually brought into the planning commission, let them look at to make sure it meets all the codes in our zoning codes, and then, then we can pass it on to the building inspector to do his portion of that as well. And that kind of takes things out of the way, so things, hopefully, things won't get kind of missed. Now, this only pertains to anything that's not a one, one-family dwelling, a two-family dwelling. A one-family dwelling and a two-family dwelling will still have a plot sign versus a, a plot, a plot plan versus a site plan. A plot plan still, at this point, goes to the building inspector, and that doesn't go to the planning commission. This is anything other than, that these are things like businesses and that sort of thing, larger, larger scale things. Anything other than a one or two dwelling, family dwelling will come to the, so it's just, it's just another way to look at it to just make sure things are not slipping through, which they are.
Is this going to affect anything that's already been approved?
No, if it's been, if it's been approved the appropriate way, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Moore, if it's been approved, if it's been approved, if it's been approved and they've been, they went through all the process and they got their building permit and they built on it, then it will come under the Non-Conformity Act, right, if it's legal to start out with.
Yes, that's, that's part of it. Again, depending on what has been approved, if there's still some non-compliance issues that, you know, need to be enforced, then you'll have to look at each one on a case-by-case basis and see if the process was complied with, what enforcement action needs to be taken. But the passing of this won't do anything to affect how those are handled.
In honesty, it probably saves the builders money because they know, instead of knowing on the hindsight, they know on the front end what's expected of them. And so, they can go before the plan, and then they, instead of them going to get the building permit and they're like, well, I didn't know, now they know, and so it's a little bit more clear, and it'll clear our problems we've had like in the past, so.
I just want to make sure we're not going to be going after existing projects.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Motion.
A motion to approve?
Approve.
Okay, do I hear a second? Okay. Do you want further explanation of this?
One question I have, so would they be going to the building inspector first or the planning commission first?
The site plan would come to the, well, actually, it could go to both at the same time, but the main thing is the planning commission will get a chance to take a look at the site plans and look at the codes and make sure the setbacks are right, that before, like you said, before the builders start building on it and find out that it's, that nobody measured this was not, this didn't meet code.
So, basically, they just need two signatures instead of one before they can start? Signature of the planning commission, signature of the building inspector.
And again, the planning commission will only look at the zoning, things that's in the zoning code, as far as the international codes like electrical codes, those sort of things, the planning commission can't do that because we're not licensed to do that, that's done by the planning.
It's basically how it sits on the land, once you get to the building itself.
First.
That's the building, so it's just sort of like, Cole, it's kind of a safeguard actually for the builder because you've got two sets of eyes saying, yes, this is the proper setback, and then they hand it off to the building inspector to make sure the building itself is correct too, and that setbacks are followed the way they're supposed to.
We got a case right now, she was telling me about where somebody's already started building, and they, it never got measured, and they're off about six or eight feet on, and so, I mean, you know, and they've already, they've got like forty, fifty thousand dollars in there, and.
See, that's why I was asking that question, I don't think that, I don't think anything we do at this meeting should say that they're going to have to tear it down if.
Yeah, I mean, it's already happened, it's happened.
Yeah.
This is just, in my opinion, to avoid future issues like that, like, I would be distraught if I went and, I got, and I was under the impression that the building inspector, well, he already signed off on it, and I built this, well, the planning commission didn't look at it, so you got to, you know, that's, that's where I think it helps us so that they know on the front end before they start building, well, you got to go before the planning commission, and it helps, it just, it's just switching the signature order, if that makes sense, like.
Well, under the, under those circumstances, I will second the motion.
Yeah, the notice for this is what we've, we've been seeing, this is not something, we've been seeing a lot of this happening, is the reason why, that's what kind of provoked this, this.
Should it have been the responsibility of the building inspector to take it to the planning commission?
Actually, the way the code is written now, he has, he has complete authority to do it without ever going to the planning commission, even with the site plan, and.
And this changes that?
He can go out.
Can I interject something too?
Yes.
The building inspector has said himself, he really doesn't want to do, he doesn't want to do setbacks, he wants to inspect the building. So, this would actually take something that would help him out because the planning commission has already checked the setbacks, and he doesn't have to do that particular section of it.
I'll second this then.
Okay. Okay, any, first and second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. All right, now we will move on to.
Number three.
The option, not the resolution. Well, okay, that's fine, basically what this is, is Mr. Sonny Carter came to me, and they have a new multi-jurisdictional county plan for hazardous mitigation. And it's a big old thick book like this, and we have a copy here that you're just welcome to peruse, it's double page, and that's what, it's got all kinds of great. This is basically what we, the county has voted on to, for their hazard mitigation plan. If something comes up, if you can look through it, I couldn't begin to explain it, but each city then is asked to pass a resolution that they approve it, and there's a letter from FEMA, where is that letter from FEMA?
It's shipping, they're packing.
There's a letter from FEMA saying that it passes muster, it's this one right here, from FEMA, saying, yes, this meets all. They approve, that's basically what the county's already done, and so they're asking us, each city, just to pass a resolution that we adopt, that we approve this, that we approve this plan that the county came up with. So, do I hear a motion to that effect?
Motion.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
I'd like to know, does this affect, what effects this has on things like flood insurance and whatnot?
It's just, I don't think.
Yes, I don't think it has any effect on flood insurance, it's always. It can affect your ability to get FEMA, A, if you haven't adopted it.
Yeah.
If I may, you have a choice of signing over to the counties or passing your own. And I did the original for the county, and it took me about eleven months.
Does this give, like, does this give more power to FEMA, should something happen, is that kind of what?
No, it's just, my understanding is just what we do if there's a.
Mandate that you have a mitigation plan.
It just means how do we handle if it happens?
Be approved by the state and the县.
Yeah, but, but Mr. Joe, it's pretty much what we do, we have a situation, how we handle it, isn't that what this is?
That's what.
So, this turns our mitigation plan over to the county?
No, no, it's just saying we accept what they've approved.
We agree, we're going to take part in the county.
Okay, okay.
So, all three cities have said, yes, we agree that this isn't our plan to use.
It's a lot easier.
Okay.
Yeah, and, you know, it's here, it was pretty thorough to me, so. I mean, and you're thought this would be an okay plan to use, and FEMA's.
I don't need to look at this one, but I would, I would, yes, I'd sign over to the county, but.
Yeah. It just said that they've reviewed it for compliance, it's your letter in here, and determined that it's compliant with federal requirements.
Okay.
And it'll be here, if anybody wants to look through it, you're more than welcome, it'll be here in the office, thank you.
So, we got a motion and a second?
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, thank you. Oh, okay, here's, here's, this is the thing that I've told you that hopefully we can get on board with, it's the new, this came out last Friday. It's the new state revolving fund loans from TDEC, they are going to have some of these as far as almost ninety percent principal forgiveness. And they come in two stages, one is the construction, I'm sorry, back up, one is the planning and design, and the other's construction. So, we can get loans for both, and they emphasize, I didn't make copies, but I'll be glad to make copies, they emphasize, starting with the planning and design, so we get it right, this is our opportunity to, by the way, what I showed you earlier, this will put us on the priority list once we have to send in a design, simple design plan. We've already gotten on the priority list for the sewer, because that came out in February, and this wonderful gentleman, Mr. Kurtz, who's helped us with all kinds of things free, he's like the guru of sewer lines in the whole state, helped them put together their permit, and he said, sure, Austin, this, and he sent it in on February. I said, fine, so we're on the priority list for the sewer side, now we can get on the priority list for the water line sign. And that, all that means is once we get on the priority list, when these roll out, we are on that list, so we can get those loans at that really, really great rate, so for what we might have been paying for one or two sewer lines, we might get the whole design, the whole construction, we don't know yet. But if we took that potential, perhaps three-quarter of a million dollars and match it with ninety percent, ten ninety, I mean, just think what we can do with that. So, this is, this could be really good for our city, we might be able to replace some of the sewer and water lines that have been needed for a long, long time here, which means we could finally replace, repave the roads over those, so it will be a pretty methodical thing. In fact, Mr. Kurtz has already said he'll help us design a I and I plan if we need that. So, we've got several engineers, again, this would go out for an RFQ for each, which engineer is the best to help us design the water side, which is the best to help us design the sewer side. So, first, we have to get on the priority list, and so I'm going to, there's a window of time, thirty days for this, so I'm going to get on this right away to get us on that list.
So, to follow proper procedure, these are projects we need, okay, so we've all determined we need these projects. So, is the next, is the next process to put in RFQ or go ahead and sign up for that?
Well, we have to, we have to get a report into these, that's the first step.
So, let's, so let's, I mean.
Well, for the sewer side, we can go ahead and do that, right?
Okay.
Because we're on the priority list.
So, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and put RFQ up for that sewer side, let's get moving on that, since we've been waiting too long on, so let's do it.
So, we're going to put one out for that, and then I will.
So, that's my person, yeah.
We will get this back to the TDEC people, and it may require like this, that I just find an engineer who will do a simple overview.
So, I got, just real quick, just one other time, I got a motion on table for the sewer line.
All right, let's do that for the sewer line.
I'm going to get RFQ out for the sewer line.
RFQ, okay, any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, so we will start working on this.
I'll make the next motion to, let's apply for that, get that application immediately, right away, as fast as possible.
To get on the priority list, yes.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, opposed? Great, so we can start getting to work on that and hopefully do a system-wide plan of how do we replace the old water and sewer lines and finally get our roads repaved, which will, that money will find down the line, but thank you very much on that. Okay. Okay, Chief Davis, gun replacement purchases. Still with us, okay, there you go. Quoting police gun purchases.
Yeah, so, a couple of months ago, almost, we had a sale of old police guns, firearms, and confiscated contraband that was signed over to us, fitted over to us. So, we had an auction, and sold everything, public auction, and at this point in time, that was, the revenue was going to be used earmarked to buy new weapons for the officers. So, what I've done is I've gotten some quotes. So what I've done is I've gotten some quotes from several different companies, and talked to other departments from around the area to kind of see who they buy weapons from and stuff like that, just to make it as fair as possible, get the best prices for us. And, uh, so Craig's Firearms of Knoxville, a lot of departments use those, because they have low prices. And, uh, Patriot Gun and Pawn on Highway twenty-five, those two companies that I've decided we need to use with y'all's approval, obviously. And, uh, so there's two different quotes. One of them's from Craig's Firearms, it's for eight handguns, and four shotguns for five thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars in due sense. And then the other one's from Patriot Gun and Pawn for seven rifles for four thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars. This cost the taxpayers zero dollars based off our sales. Still have plus two thousand dollars, actually, uh, credit to the city that we can use for possible other things in the future. So this doesn't cost the city anything.
Did Brian quote the, the pistols and the rifle, and the shotguns too, or not?
Uh, he, so I, two local companies about the handguns, they could not get them.
Okay.
Backordered. Craig's has a specific, I guess, distribution for long-term stuff, so they actually have them in stock over there.
Okay. I just didn't know if he had, if he had, you know, if it was.
Well, actually, I've touched base with him numerous times.
Semi-close to it, so.
Sent him numerous emails, and, uh, some of the shotguns, it was, uh, easier for them to, than Craig's to get them. So I tried to split it up as evenly as I possibly could.
We were with the eight seventies, huh?
Yeah, between those and Moss Perves.
That's a good weapon.
Are we, you're requesting both of these then?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's what I would request, the permission for.
Make a motion, we approve the purchase.
Second. Okay, motion is made in second to approve the purchase. Uh, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed?
Thank you, everyone. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara, I just realized I didn't show you. Do you still wanna do that?
Um, I, I think we're fine. If it's fair, cool.
Okay. Um, the next item is, uh, the historic sign, which, uh, probably know the one we're talking about. It used to be by Mr. Wokerson's, and it somehow mysteriously fell and crashed. And we, uh, actually had an engineer that came out and took a look, because Mr. Billy Woodard wrote, um, he came to me and said, this is something that the, one of the former leadership classes had, no, no, it was downtown, it's the downtown project. One of those. Anyway, there was a grant for thirty-five hundred dollars to pay for that. It was very expensive, very expensive sign. So he was not happy. He wrote a letter to Mr. Witt, serious letter to Mr. Witt, saying that needed to be replaced. Mr. Witt wrote back, it was an act of God. And then, um, Mr. Woodard wrote back another letter, and, yes, sir.
Now, don't I understand that when we first got that sign, it had to be maybe returned to them for some, for some modifications already?
I think so. I don't know.
I think so, yeah.
All right.
So who was responsible on getting it down or returning it with the install? Well, yeah, it happened. Um, was, was it, was it the, was it, when we had that happen, was it the city responsible getting down, returning, or wasn't there because they installed?
No, 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 no. This fell and crashed. It had nothing to do with that.
He's talking about before.
He's talking, before this, before this.
I don't, I'm not aware of.
Uh, this sign crash happened. Um, we had to do some maintenance on it, correct? And they had some maintenance that they requested. What I'm asking is, was it our responsibility to take down the sign and send it to Witt, or was it Witt's responsibility?
Are you talking about the chain that had to be repaired, or what do you?
I'm not sure. I was told that, that when they first put it up, that it was insufficiently put up or something, and they had to come and redo it.
It wasn't. It down for a while. It was down for a while.
That day it happened, there was no acts of God, our member.
Yeah, I'm talking about, it was down for a while.
It was just a.
Well, and actually, prior, prior to it falling, we did have to call them because one of the chains had broken. So that they came out and repaired. And by the way, they, they wanted us to pay five hundred thirty-six thou, five hundred thirty-six dollars for that, which we said, no, no, not right now, because, uh, the engineer did come out and say that the screws that held it in, like less than them said it for about this long, they should have been really long to hold a, a sign that, that heavy.
It'd go through at least the head of the brig.
Yeah, no one was wondering next to it.
And then, and then Mr. Moore sent us, mailed a letter. Have we heard that?
I have, I did not hear back from Mr. Witt.
Okay. So right now, we, we have put them on notice that we want this replaced. And it's thirty-five hundred dollars being paid for that. And this is before I came on board, but that's, so that's where it is right now.
Okay.
When did it fall? When was it, was it, it was this year, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, when you, when you said, before you came on board, that confused me. I thought it was this spring.
Oh, no, the, the payment. It's been up there for maybe three years. I don't know.
And just to clarify, based on the discussion tonight, when they did the prior work on it, they also put it back up again that time that the city decided.
Yes, they, they came out with a big old truck, and all they did is, they repaired it in place. They put a different chain there.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that the town did not have any changes to it.
The only thing I know we ever did was originally, we, uh, sent all the old paint off of that pipe in, and we painted it black.
Yeah.
And I think they took over from there as far as hanging the sign, or whatever they had to come back and do with the sign. I don't think the city's ever had anything to do with that.
Yeah, okay.
On, on a side note, when, when they paint that building, which they're getting ready to, I'm sure, it has to come down again.
If it, if it's up by then, yes.
Yeah, so.
No, that's a good point.
Happened at the same time.
They painted it?
They're painting it blue, gray.
It's part of the facade thing.
The whole building.
So what would you suggest? Let's just wait and see if he's gonna respond. What do you think?
Yeah, it's up, it's up to you. I did, I think I did put the, tonight's meeting in the ladders to hopefully get a response before then, but I don't know. Again, we can, we can wait till, um, next month and see if there's any response, whatever the council wants to do.
And by then, maybe the building will be.
Yeah, 'cause it'll be hiding, you know, if they get down.
Yeah. Uh, if, if we don't hear from them, I would definitely give a call. I'm sure you could give a call to them.
I'm glad to follow up with the phone call.
Okay.
We don't have to do any more motions.
And, and in Mr. Woodard's letter, he pointed out that he's always had a good relationship with this company, and we need to continue that, so.
Uh, it didn't look like it was very good to me.
Well, I guess in previous situations, I don't know. Okay, so we will just wait and see what we hear from them on that, okay? Um, okay, special parade events and other things. So we've got two sets of different things. Mr. Moore's gonna, I think it's in your packet that he's put together.
So, um, the, the main ordinance that I was prepared to discuss is the special event permit, um, that we looked at draft of last month. I did make a few revisions to it, um, some of which may not be obvious, but I'll try to explain briefly what, um.
Does everybody have a copy of the, the larger revision?
One of the issues that was raised either at the meeting or conversations with the mayor is, uh, maybe wanting to handle parades that were more frequently, um, done separately than, uh, special events permit. So what I have done is amended that provision slightly so that any parades, um, that are happened can be approved just by submitting a request to, to recorder, uh, basically handled the same way that they're handled now. But this new ordinance would apply to larger special events. Um, most of those terms are the same as they were, um, presented last month. Uh, I did add a provision that I know we discussed about, um, this ordinance shall not affect any special event that's already been approved or that is applied for before the effective date. So we will, we may still have some special events out there that are, um, going forward under the.
Walking day or whatever.
The existing law. Um, but I'm glad to answer any questions. I, there are probably some other issues, specifically, um, alcoholic beverages. If you want to address them in this, uh, ordinance, um, or any other provisions, um, that you wanna make sure. I know there was also some conversations about setting time limits or other, um, limits on a permit. The way it's structured now, it, it gives the mayor some flexibility in how to, to do that as far as imposing conditions on events. And again, it would, you know, any, any decision by the mayor could be appealed to this council for review. Um, but glad to discuss any of the specific issues or.
And this is separate from the liquor. The, the ordinance.
Yes, I'm just talking about the special events.
Right, right, not the, the one for.
If y'all want to discuss them together, we can, but I thought it might be easier discussing individually.
I motion approve, and then I'm gonna make a motion for amendments.
Okay. I'm sorry.
And this is just first reading, so I don't. You wanna make a, you wanna make a motion with amendments?
Yeah, I guess, is that be the?
I think that's.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion with amendments. Uh, uh, and the amendments on the motion would be on section one, six dash five, zero, six, grant or denial, changing the mayor to the council. Uh, that's section A. Section B, changing the mayor to the council. Section C, changing the mayor to the council. Section D, changing the mayor to the council. And then on one, six dash five, zero, seven, terms and conditions. Section A, changing the mayor to the council. That'd be my motion with the amendment.
May I just add to that? That means we have to meet every time there's an application. We'll have to have a special meeting to do that.
Well, if you have enough time to put that.
We extend it from thirty days to sixty days. That would.
That would cover by the meeting.
That we would have a meeting.
Yeah.
We have to extend that time period.
So do we want, okay. So, and where was, where's that at, right down there?
Um, sixteen, five, oh, three.
Five, oh, three, B. And, uh, I'd like to add, uh, changing thirty to sixty days.
So they need to put it in sixty days in advance, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
All right, let me ask this. Is there a way to word it in there so that in the event that some, I can't imagine what it would be, but if, in the event that someone does come up with something they wanna do, and they don't have thirty days, that they could request a special meeting?
You mean sixty days?
Sixty days.
Yeah, if they could, yeah. If they could give the sixty days. What's y'all's thought on that?
I mean, I, I, I think that they could definitely request. Did, I don't know, do we, we need to add something in there, but, I mean.
I mean, like, what if all of a sudden we had a chance that they were gonna bring the Veterans Memorial through here, and, and we had thirty days to, you know, approve it or whatever? I'd hate to say, well, you, y'all can't bring them, because they give them sixty days.
So the current language does allow the council to waive the time, even with the thirty days.
Unless the city council waives the time.
Okay, good, all right.
As long as they get it in front of you to where you can hold a meeting.
Just, just to throw it out, because it doesn't matter to me one way or other, but it also, if, if a mayor, whoever it is, says okay, you can still say no. Or if they say no, you can still okay. So you do have the right to overrule whatever the mayor says. The only thing this gives is, is a quick way for people to come in and apply, and the mayor most likely will say, yes, let's go forward. And they don't have to have a special meeting with the council to do it. So either way you wanna go with it, but.
I'll keep my motion on table.
Okay.
Second. And just, there may be another section or two here that, um, would be affected by those changes, but I'll.
If you have future, okay.
Highlight those for next meeting.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Okay, motion is on second. Any further discussion? Okay, all through? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? Okay. And we have a second one here that deals with special occasion that we have alcohol.
So in the current code, um, there is a, basically an open container ordinance that makes it a violation of the city code to have an open container. This is, uh, created to allow for an exception to the open container law if it's part of a, um, special event that has been approved by the town and is being held by a charitable, nonprofit, or political organization possessing a special occasion license issued by the ABC. Um, the, the alcoholic beverage commission regulations are, are very extensive and detailed. There are all sorts of, um, permits that will allow for the sale of, of alcoholic beverages. I think the most likely one would be this special, uh, occasion license pursuant to a special permit. But I haven't checked every single one to say that there wouldn't be another type of event that might qualify for serving alcoholic beverages.
I think that this would cover at least what we have right now, and then down the road. If we need to make another ordinance or change, we can, we can do that down the road. But this covers a lot of our, you know, functions that happen.
Well, this also, so this will also cover something like the wine tasting?
If, if their permit is a special occasion license for selling it, then it would. Now, if you did something like, uh, wine, there's a wine down Main Street in Franklin where, you know, people that have license, there may be a restaurant that's selling, uh, wine pursuant to their own, or giving out wine pursuant to their own liquor license, you know, technically that wouldn't apply, but, uh, I'm at an open fee.
Yeah. It's like, like wine tastings are different, 'cause you're not serving in actual, you're, it's a tasting. And so it's a completely different permit, 'cause you're not, you're not charging for a beverage, per se, but, uh.
There is something in your packet, if you would take a look, it's, it's, this is the state regulations for the kind of thing we're talking about. So there's, that, that's basically how they would get their ABC license. Liquor by the drink, special occasion, that's in there. And it's got.
So we're, it's not, we're not talking about the courthouse yard?
This is just city, yeah. This would be city proper courthouse would be under, something county, yeah. I'd like to make a motion that we, um.
Hang on, my, my question would be, would this just be an exception to the already ordinance of the open container law that's already in place?
Yes.
How would that work?
This, this provision, this ordinance is, yeah.
So as long as it's approved and.
Yeah.
Well, chief, basically, I, though it has to follow all the restrictions of the ABC, so, but it's only a, a nonprofit or charitable organization, so it couldn't be anyone who's all, didn't have a five oh one C three rating. And then they have to go through all these steps.
And they come for y'all.
And it would just be for twenty-four hour, it wouldn't be beyond that.
Yeah.
But, but just so you know, and I, I don't know, I didn't realize this till I read
through it, but, uh, of course, it has to be a bona fide, uh, nonprofit, but also any liquor, well, the, the funds have to be in a separate, and I.
Yeah, all, all of those are ABC regulations that that license has to comply with.
But the other one, I didn't, don't know, I certainly didn't know, but it has to be purchased from a retail package store. It can't be from a wholesale store. So any charitable that does this, it has to come from a retail package.
They have to comply with those regulations. Yeah, again, I think, again, because this is an open container law, the chief's concerned about is, as far as being eligible to make enforcement, he just, he's writing tickets to people with containers. He's not.
I just wanna make sure everything's okay. That's all. Yeah, I just don't want.
And I guess, does it specify within a certain area for these?
It, it would have to be within the special event.
Yeah, it'd be under that one permit, yeah.
So who enforces if it's from a package store instead of, who enforces that?
Oh, that's a good question.
I mean, I think the town could look at it for purposes of its permit, but, and the ABC would look at it for purposes of the license.
Liquor and wine is enforced by the state. Beer is enforced by the city.
But I guess the question, and chief, you might can answer this. If you see a wholesale truck pull up with liquor in it, you would have to stop them, wouldn't you? That's what I'm getting, is who would enforce it with the police? Be responsible for that, or?
This is just extreme right there.
We're gonna go to prohibition here.
I think the reason you get from a le, retail is because of the tax base, isn't it? I, I don't know, is that?
Right, but you're, you're talking about a violation of the Alcohol Beverage Commission regulation, and this is just about having an open container of alcohol on the street.
I know, I'm just saying, just so we understand what we're doing, this is what the state requires. So just so we know.
Well, I know, for instance, when we used to have Ducks Unlimited dinners, uh, the beer distributors would usually donate us a couple of kegs or something like that. And it. That's why I was chairman for SLO, you know. But that, that, this wouldn't outlaw, wouldn't rule that out, would it?
Yeah, all this applies to, this particular ordinance is, is having it open on the public street, having that open container. It creates an exception for these types of special events.
Basically, kind of what, like the River City Ball, now it's officially legal, it's within its side.
But you can't take it outside of the grounds, is it?
Yeah, it's gotta, yeah.
You couldn't go walk down Main Street with it from you, man.
Well, and, and even this, even the law here says you can't take it off the premises, so.
Yeah.
Are there any other important questions, though, chief, that we're not thinking about?
I just wanna make sure that if that was, the ordinance and everything, that just wanna make sure it just wasn't gonna put us in bad spot. Sounds like we gotta cut. Sounds like we got cut.
So I motion, we move forward with this ordinance.
Second.
Okay, motion second, any further discussion? So this is the first reading, is that, first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Now, I do have one question, because the high school principal's already asked me about doing the parade, so we're good to go on that one, okay?
I assume that I wanted to bring it up, Christmas parade, homecoming parade, and I don't, we do better than parade here.
We did.
Well, I thought we did, so those would pretty much be standard.
Those will just stay the same, same process.
Is there any, any?
Might be a special event.
Oh, we have future, past, future.
You can take that, well, actually, no, because I have three things on here, but they, one of them did have to do with engineer. I'd like to motion that we move forward on the Turner Lift Station project to be done in-house. So you guys go ahead and get that done, and that's in our budget and everything.
You're saying in-house, I'm saying we will have to bid it, but it'll be done by a local contractor, and, and we're looking at it not being over fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay.
When I say in-house, that would be less coming down.
Yeah, I'm sorry for the wrong term all over there, but being done.
We were looking at fixing the valves and, and changing out the bummer system, and if we do that, I don't see where we would have to do anything for the next five, six years, seven years. If we had to replace the motor, I think I quoted in at five hundred dollars, and we could do that in-house.
That's what I was looking at, that motor, I was looking at that motor.
But I just don't think we need to go top a hundred thousand dollars or so right now on that lift station, I just don't think.
Steve, do we have money in the budget already, then, that we?
We made, my, my collection budget is, I think, only twenty or twenty-five thousand a year, and we just did the vortex pump, so I'll have to look, but it'll be something that this close will.
Well, I'm saying, would, would a grant help you if we could find a grant for that?
No, I think we'd be better off doing it in-house, and I don't think we'd get a grant for that.
Well, but that's.
I mean, I'm more for just, as soon as we go.
Yeah.
You know, that's just what we try to do.
So if I, if I'm rewarding, rewarding this motion, let's, I motion that we get bids on the Turner Lift Station to be done locally.
Because if it's gonna be over ten thousand dollars, we gotta put it out.
Yeah, we got a bit of bid anyway, yeah.
Stood the right way, but let's see what the actual cost gonna be, and if we're coming around fifteen, then we'll, we'll bring it back to the council and go forward with it.
Okay, sounds good.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in second to, well, you're gonna put a bid, or Steve to put out bids for the lift station. Yes, all in favor, well, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that does it.
Um, still got some, some more new business. Uh, I'd like to motion that we have the city submit for official bids for the mixer at the city tank at Water Hill.
You need a mixer that does a water tank?
Water tank at. You guys decided you.
Somebody on mine tank?
It, uh.
No, we're not.
No, this is the one that sit the, at Water, you all call it Water Hill.
Water Tank Hill.
Yeah, Water Tank Hill.
No.
This is the one they didn't put the pipe in, that they, I think Rusty's talking about, you might have to put a mixer in it to keep the water there back.
So y'all, y'all think you need the mixer then?
Well, the, the design has that in it.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll withdraw my motion on that one then.
They changed that on the plan, yeah.
Okay, I would draw my motion on that. Um, I'm sorry.
No, it's like, you're talking about the Turkey Creek, the change on the plans, right?
That's my, that's my next one.
No, but.
Oh, so this is something else?
This is the, the big blue tank that was just built up on the hill. Rusty said something about having to.
Turn the water.
Turn the water.
Because they didn't build the vent, the pipe working on the valve, about the valve.
Yeah. That came up at that meeting we were all, the, the.
Oh, okay.
Well, you think about it, you let us know.
Yeah, we'll come back.
Bring some information back on it.
Yeah.
So this might.
But you withdrew that one.
Yeah, I withdrew that, so this might affect the other one, or might not. A motion that we have the city submit for official bids for a stand-up pipe at the Turkey Creek facility.
Well, that's part of the design now.
I think it's in there.
It's already in there, so we don't need a motion for that, okay, so I'll withdraw that motion. Okay, and this one last one came to me today, so I won't try to spring this on to you like literally an hour before. Mr. Larry Ash, we saw him.
Well, that's not.
He's your neighbor. Can we, we can bring it up on our new business, correct?
Well, no, it's not only.
It's up to the council if you want to allow a new item to be discussed.
Yeah, I want to hear it.
It can be discussed, we don't necessarily have to vote on it, chief.
Okay. Basically, I guess he's got a letter from the city about, he's got some, he's right across the street from you.
He's got some goats and chickens.
Yeah, he's got some goats and chickens, and basically, I was looking at everything on it, and it's, it's pretty well kept up and everything like that, you know? And it basically, he can have them as long as there's a letter signed off by the health inspector, if I'm correct on that.
Well, there's a whole ordinance.
Okay, yeah, and I was reading up the ordinance on it. So basically, this is signing off on it at the cost of two hundred dollars, so that he can keep that. I really feel it'd be nice just to be able to sign off on it.
I think.
They are pets and not farm animals.
Yeah, and he's, I mean, he keeps it up well nice, the other thing is, we, uh, he's basically, he's getting things, saying that everybody's calling and complaining, and he's trying to get, find out who's all calling and complaining, because he's asked around and.
Well, I can tell you, his, his neighbor next door was the one who filed the complaint, because she's very close to it, and she says she's having problems with the smell, and, and so when someone files a complaint, because there is an ordinance, and to be honest with you, that ordinance, what I'm understanding, this happened before I came along, but they, they never, there was never the proper permit to begin with allowing them to do that. The permit basically says, or the ordinance says, that there can't be animals of that farming nature within two hundred feet of a home unless a health officer appointed by the city says it's okay, and there's a whole list of things.
So we're saying this is okay, but we're charging them two hundred bucks for it.
No, no, they never got the permit.
We don't have a health officer.
We don't have a health officer, we don't charge them anything.
Well.
Okay, he's saying he's getting charged two hundred bucks.
Because this has come up, and we do have to have this, once, once there's a complaint, we have to follow through with it. So we do have a health officer who's doing that, it has to be a medical doctor, and Dr. Duke said he would be glad to help with that.
Do we not have to approve who our medical officer is going to be?
Yeah, I think we do.
I mean, I'm not.
I mean, that's fine, we can do that.
You know, for, make sure we're crossing that, ties and dot and t's, or whatever it is.
We have to, we're in violation by not having one.
Where, where's this two hundred dollar number coming from?
Well, let's first work on the fact we're in violation, since you brought it up, we don't have a health official, and it has to be a medical doctor, so I, can I have someone who would maybe nominate someone to be that, or do you know anyone?
We can vote on it, it's not on the agenda, we can put it on next month.
That's what I was, go ahead, appoint that officer at the next month's meeting.
So be thinking about it, because we have to have one by law.
May I ask, Roger, is this something you'd be willing to do?
Yes, I'd be glad to.
You can tell when a chicken stinks, can't you?
But I will, I will say this, there's more to it than just looking at it and saying that. There's a lot of things, there's a lot of, there's a lot of objective data that you have to go through whether you approve these things or not. So I just want, I just want.
I mean, there's a standard form.
You just can't go look at it and go, okay, it's good or it's bad, I mean, there's objective.
I just want to make sure you'd be willing to do it if we next month nominated you.
I'm just, and again, like, it's just up for thinking, this guy's had this here for three or four years, these are family pets, these are part of his family. I mean, I'm, I'm personally, I can't stand goats, this is my personal opinion, but I also see the, you know, these are, this is part of his family, you know? And so we keep that in consideration in how we move forward on this, is all, I'm just, try to have a little empathy, is all.
We have to look at the neighbors too, like what's going on with them, there's kids.
What'd you say, Les?
When you do this, you're gonna open it up for everybody to have goats, chickens, whatever they want.
Yeah, and, and kind of like we were talking with the, and you're exactly right, kind of what we were talking about with the, we open up a new door, and, and maybe people know upfront that this isn't going on, but he's had it there for three or four years, no one's ever objected to it, and now he's just finding out, you know, it'd be one thing if he's just, he put it up, and then they were like, you can't do this. And then there's another thing where he's had it three or four years, and then you're taking away all stuff. I mean, I'm just trying to have a little empathy here, is all, so.
Yeah, but I do say this, we have one of those stuff we do have in here too.
Yeah, so.
I just, I just want to make it clear that, before you nominate me, I just want to make it clear that, that I'm gonna go by the rules, okay? So, I mean, I'm gonna go by the rules and make it fair for everybody, okay?
Yeah.
So.
It's a hard, it's a hard decision.
But it's not a decision, I think what he's saying, there is a whole.
Yeah, well, we gotta go by the rules, I mean.
I'm not gonna go, if I get appointed this, I'm not gonna go down there and just look at it and go, okay, it looks fine to me, and he's, it's his family and so on and so forth. I'm gonna look at all the diseases that, that, they're, the Department of Agriculture, and they have rules that you have to go by when you do these things. So whatever decision I come up with, I'll, they'll probably have two or three things reported telling you why I came up with that decision.
Will we pay you for each?
No, no.
Okay. I mean, I, I don't care either way, I just think we need to know.
Normally, we would, but I think he said he wouldn't charge, so, and, and again, this only came up.
I think we would need to determine a rate, so if at some point in the future, not, they help.
I think, I think.
I see, yeah.
I think it's stated in, is it in our, maybe in our charter?
I haven't looked at it.
I haven't seen it in the charter.
This is out, it's actually in our charter, we have to have a.
It's, it's in the, it's in the animal control section.
I walk by every night when I'm out walking, I think it's really. I just like the thought.
Yeah, and, and again, yeah, I mean, you're right, we gotta open up, it's a hard decision we gotta make here.
I'll tell you, I'll have to abstain on this in any way under the circumstances.
Yeah.
And I will tell you, there's probably more ordinances than that one that he's, he's not, that he's. Just to let you know ahead of time, there's, there's not just one ordinance that's probably at fault there, there's more than.
I walked to the house behind you, the one that you, the lady that called complaining, and you could smell it strong.
Yeah, and again.
It's only about twenty, twenty-five, thirty foot.
And, and the law, the ordinance actually reads, if you'll go to animal control and our, and our, it's our ordinances, yeah, animal control, it basically says, there can't be farm animals within two hundred feet unless a health officer who's a medical doctor comes out and checks everything and says it's healthy for this to be within two hundred feet.
And the two hundred feet, there's a reason for the two hundred feet, that's not just an arbitrary number, there's a reason for two hundred feet dealing with, and especially with goats compared to, to some other animals. Goats carry diseases that they can have and can give to people, and the goats look healthy while they're doing that. So there's a lot of, a lot of issues that doesn't, you're just going down and go, it smells, and it looks bad, and so on and so forth. Again, I'm just being fooled, I'm, I'm giving you full disclosure before you appoint me.
And, and again, we've never, apparently never had a health officer, but we've been in violation because we haven't had, so we need to get back and conform with this, with our own ordinances, I guess, so next time we'll, we'll table that next time, then, to talk about that.
Motion adjourned.
Second.